Good evening and welcome to the ISD 191 Burnsville Eagan Savage School Board Meeting. Today is March 19th, 2020 and the time is 6:30 PM. I'd like to start, since our clerk Courier is not with us tonight, I'm going to appoint Director Hawiger as tonight's clerk in her absence. And I wanted to welcome folks who are tuning in from home, hopefully there are some of you out there. This has certainly been an extraordinary week and anyone watching the meeting on Channel 18 or online can see that our new reality is affecting board meetings too. We are following Department of Health recommendations about maintaining distance between individuals. Later tonight, the board will also consider a measure that will allow us to hold our meetings remotely. Our primary concern, as always, is the health and safety of our staff and each other. But we will also do our best to ensure we are still accessible to our community. I just want to mention that these changes, for us, are at worst an inconvenience. For our staff and students and families, this week has been a monumental departure from the norm. With direction from the governor to close schools to students and prepare to resume instructions on March 30th through distance learning, the challenge is immense. In response, what I've seen through social media and heard in phone and web conversations has been truly outstanding. Our community is working together to meet the challenge, to make sure students are fed and cared for, and to prepare for a whole new way of doing business. The phrase "we are 191" has never been truer and I have never been prouder. If our viewers want to know more about our district's response to the coronavirus outbreak, I encourage you to stay tuned to the work session following the meeting. For now, my sincerest gratitude to everyone for their efforts this week. Thanks to you all. With that, Director Hume, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will start by approving tonight's agenda. I will take a motion. Moved by Director Schatz, second. Seconded by Director Chester. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the motion carries. Next, we will turn to committee reports. And let's see. Policy Review Committee with Chair Chester.
Yep. We have a few policies that are part of the consent agenda tonight that were presented at the board meeting on March 12th. I had to think of the date. That's policy 208, policy 305, policy 414, policy 415, 421, and 514. Also, on the, being approved tonight, hopefully, is policies 205 regarding open meeting and closed meetings, and policy 607, organization of grade levels.
Thank you. Negotiations with Chair Schatz.
I am pleased to report that the district has settled the contract with BEA and will be moving forward for the next two years to continue the excellent teaching and services that we offer our students.
Great, thank you. And thanks to our committee members, all of you, and to our staff that have helped work our way through to this agreement. You guys have really put in a lot of thought and effort and time, so thank you. Legislative Committee with Chair Hawiger.
We were supposed to have a meeting this last Monday, but it got canceled due to the staff and others needing to plan for our new realities here, so meetings for that have been on hold for now.
Great, thank you. And Student Performance and Achievement Committee, Committee of the Whole, Dr. Battle and Director Miller and I continue to work together to bring workshops forward under the SPA heading. We have one tonight in workshop as well. Next, board appointments. Are there any reports from board appointments? Okay. I have two from Director Courier, that Director Courier submitted, and I will give the print out to Jamie. 917, along with the 191 schools, the 917 schools were and are closed March 16th through the 27th. And, as our district did, planning occurred in all places the first week. You can imagine how complex that is for the students served in 917. Superintendent Zuzek sent a comprehensive letter to the 917 staff on March 17th detailing plans known at that time. For a more complete and detailed, for more complete and detailed information about the district and its plan for this emergency, go to its website, www.isd917.k12.mn.us. And then, Association of Metropolitan School Districts. What may have been the last large group AMSD meeting was held Friday, March 6th in Roseville from 7:00 to 9:00 AM. Two outstanding presentations were given. The first entitled "Closing Minnesota's Achievement Gaps," with presenters Neil Kashkari, President Minneapolis Federal Reserve Bank, and Justice Alan Page, retired Justice Minnesota Supreme Court. The second was "Updates From the Professional Educator Licensing and Standards Board," presented by Alex Liuzzi, Executive Director, and board members Superintendent Steve Unowski and Lucy Payne. Both presentations can be found on the AMSD website, amsd.org, under the March meeting No other reports? All right. With that, we will turn to Consent Agenda. Although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold discussion on these items. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will be moved for separate consideration. Do we have anything that folks want to separate? Hearing none. I will take a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Director Hume, second.
Second.
Seconded by Director Miller. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the motion carries. Our first item of new business is, we are being asked to approve agreements with CenterPoint Energy, and we have Lisa Ryder, Executive Director of Business Services, at the presenter's table.
Good evening. Tonight, we're here to talk about the CenterPoint Energy's proposal. They notified us in September of 2019 of their intentions to abandon two of our easements on our property at BHS, Burnsville High School, after they removed from service the gas pipelines that are below ground, while creating a new easement that will hold two new, much larger gas lines. This is an image of our property at Burnsville High School, and you can somewhat see just through the, through the image where the lines actually do pass kind of right across the fields, as you can see there. And so those would then be vacated. We have one line that goes right here through the infield, and the new lines would go basically straight down here through and between the two tennis courts that we have, and then it would cut over so as to avoid the infield and move off our property. So with that in mind, we engaged the services of Kennedy Graven to assist in creating the agreements necessary to ensure that our interests were considered. Included in the board package tonight is that agreement. The project is expected to begin June 8th, 2020, and run into August 2020, with the details yet to be determined. It is recommended that this agreement that we have be approved by our board so that they can move forward with their planning.
And the recommendation, yes, please.
The recommendation is to approve the agreements with CenterPoint Energy for replacement of pipeline across BHS property summer of 2020.
Great, thank you, Lisa.
I'm sorry. Would you like me to read the actual recommendation?
Sure, why don't we do that?
That the Board of Education approves the agreements with the CenterPoint Energy for transition to replacement of pipeline located across Burnsville High School property during the summer of 2020.
Thank you. I will take a motion. Moved by Director Schatz, second.
Second.
Seconded by Director Hume. Questions or comments?
I just want to clarify. So you said the new pipeline would go under the tennis courts or through the tennis?
It will go between the tennis courts.
Between, okay.
Yep, and as you read the agreement, it does allow for us to put things over the top of it once it's in. But for now, that's where we go.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? I just had a question about the practice, you know, where our athletes will, will practice.
Right, so athletes will not be allowed on the outside of the building. Inside the building, we will be able to use that during the summer months, but the outside fields will be offline for purposes of two projects, potentially, two, two main projects, one being the turf being replaced as our long-term facility plan calls for, as well as then this project with the pipelines. And they are going to be happening around the same time, so that will limit the amount of time that we actually have to have the area off limits to our athletes.
Great, thank you. With that, I will, all those in favor of approving the recommendation, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the motion carries. Second, we are being asked to approve converting all board meetings to teleconference or other electronic means until further notice. Pulling it up. Obviously, this board needs, needs and wants to be able to continue our work. We have a lot going on right now, and we also need to make sure that we are practicing safe practices, both for staff and for ourselves. And we also want to make sure we maintain transparency with our, with our community. So the recommendation is that the Board of Education approves converting all board meetings to teleconference or other electronic means until further notice pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13.D.O21. I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Director Chester, second.
Second.
Seconded by Director Miller. Any comments or questions?
I just want to...
Director Hume.
Maybe for the sake of our audience, if we could explain about open meeting laws in the state of Minnesota and how we'll make sure that we are still compliant with those laws moving forward.
Right, yep. So we, all, all board meetings, except for those that are allowed to be closed, are open to the public. So in terms of teleconferencing, we would still livestream, well, we're working, staff is working on, yeah, check the website in terms of what we are able to do. The goal is obviously to livestream as well as record our teleconferences. If we're not able to livestream, then obviously the proceedings of, of each board meeting would be posted once the meeting is over, or within the next 24 hours. Dr. Battle, do you have anything to add?
Gerald, I think you covered all the main points, and details will be posted on our website.
Great.
Thank you.
I would just reiterate what Director Hume was saying, in, in that if it has to be where we would have to let people know that the meeting is posted, that we do that as efficiently as we can and through social media and e-blasting so that they're aware of how to find it.
Absolutely, yep, yep.
Isn't there also, like, the paper of record has to be informed for open law, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, thanks.
Anything else? All right, all those in favor of approving the recommendation, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the motion carries. Next, we will adjourn to a workshop. We have several items on that agenda, and we will just take two minutes to make sure we get paperwork signed before we go to the workshop. I will take a motion to adjourn to a workshop. Moved by Director Schatz, second.
Second.
Seconded by Director Hume. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And we are adjourned. I will just take a couple minutes. So we will start our workshop with a presentation from Ellers in the City on updates about the facilities process, milestones, and deliverables. Lisa Ryder from our team, as well as, I'd like to welcome Stacy from Ellers. Thank you for being here.
So I'll start us off with a thank you to both Ellers and Stacy as part of that team, and Jenny from the city of Burnsville as well, helping us with any questions we may have. As this process for ISD 191 is new and different, not our norm, and so we are looking to our partners in this and in understanding how this might flow well for us and how it is that we can gather the information necessary. As has been mentioned, these are the outcomes that we're talking about for this evening. And as we get started here, we'll be talking first about the Ellers process and, and update of that. We will be discussing some staff and community engagement conversation and then next steps as well. I'm going to turn it over to Stacy now, to go ahead and begin our conversation.
Great, you can go to the first slide. Thank you, Chair Commissioners, good to see you again tonight. Stacy, I'm just going to overview kind of our process to date and some of our preliminary findings. I know you folks are anxious, right, to learn, you know, what's the outcome, what's the best option that's out there? And it just takes us a little bit of time to work through that process and get good information that's out there. You know, really, what we're looking to do is to gather really, you know, independent, unbiased information for this site. So when folks hear that there's a chunk of land in a fully developed suburb coming up for opportunity for development, people start coming out of the woods, looking at it and thinking that there's great, you know, things for it, and what they'd like to offer, what they'd like to do. And what we like to do is just take a process and talk to folks that we know that are good, qualified developers, that are good partners. And why we do that is partnership is really, really important. It's a partnership between you, it's a partnership between the city, and it's a partner between whoever you sell that land to. Now granted, you guys could just go out and sell this and not care about what happens, but we know that's not who you are, you know, as a board. You do have that vested interest. And the city is a partner as well because they control the zoning and future development on that site, but potentially they bring the financial incentives that may be needed for some of this development to actually get done. So again, when we're out there talking to folks, it's talking to developers that we really view get that partnership aspect. They're not in it for them. They understand that there's a three-party agreement of different goals and objectives that have to be met, and it takes a lot to figure out how does that all come together to have the best outcome for everyone in that area. In addition, what we'll do is then we are going to just summarize that data and try to put it in concise, easy format for you guys to look at to help you make some decisions because it's a lot of information that's coming down the pipeline. But again, we're trying to make it pretty concise so you can make an informed decision how you want to move forward. Let's move to the next slide. So just to show where we're sitting today, here we are at the Diamond Head Education Center. You have 11 and a half acres. Again, it's a great location off of, just close to Niclet, off of Burnsville Parkway and 35W for this area. Let's go to the next slide. To date, Lisa and other staff, and Jenny from the city, myself and Jason, we met with six qualified developers, again, ones that are well-regarded in the development and redevelopment world, to really come together and start giving us their thoughts and perspectives on the site, from a location, from what they saw for uses that would likely go here and how that would match up with the city's comprehensive plan, what their viewpoint was on price points for the site, what the challenges would be, and what the other opportunities that maybe we haven't thought about for the site. You know, preliminary outcome from those meetings, you know, we heard things that at least I wasn't shocked about and you guys may not be shocked about either. It's a great site, right? It really, truly is a great site. You have a great location here, again, just off of the interstate and near heart of the city. Really what everyone had said, and again, this isn't surprising because we hear this more routinely throughout the metro area, multifamily is what's really going to lead the redevelopment efforts. Again, you're seeing lots of projects that are currently going up in Burnsville and around the metropolitan area. And again, that's where your strongest cash position's going to be. Because you can go vertical with those, that's where you're going to be able to attain the most, most dollar outcome from your project. Again, limited retail use, as we discussed before, retail market is a little fickle, even how, maybe more so, especially what we're seeing with the virus and the issues that are coming up with that. But there would be some limited retail, especially if you're putting some housing there that they'd like to see. So the service-type retail, it could be restaurants and other things. The other thing we talked about was office industry leaders as well to say, what is the market here? And again, it's soft here, just like it is everywhere. So it's probably limited to little or no use for the office, which again, wasn't as surprising for us. And then we did discuss opportunities for hotels, you know, for the site, and I think after going through the discussions with that, it's likely not a hotel site either. They're seeing challenges even before this, you know, of just where average daily room rates and occupancies are throughout the metropolitan area, especially within this area, you're pretty well saturated with some of the hotel uses that are out there. Go to the next slide. Part of the discussions, you know, that we said, well, hey, we have all these people sitting here in a room with us, you know, we want to talk to them about some of the other sites, and we want to talk about some of the other sites as far as redevelopment goes. So that brought up Metcalf. So, you know, one of your options is, is that you can sell this and move over to Metcalf. And we said, well, what if we do the flip? What if you stay in, you sell Metcalf to get some money to do some additional things you'd like to do on this site or elsewhere within the district? So we got the picture of Metcalf School up on the slide there. That's about 35 acres. What I want to point out is just that blue or kind of light gray line that's going perpendicular to the site, that's just letting everybody know, some people think Metcalf is in Burnsville, it's not. So that gray line is the line of demarcation, so Burnsville's on the left and Eagan is on the right, okay? So we did have discussions with the city of Eagan just on a, just a very preliminary basis to talk about, hey, currently this is owned, you know, public institutional, what would you see as a future land use, or what would you guys be open to on that site? And again, we can go to the next slide. It's that it's basically a great site for single family. And we heard that from the development community as well. They said it's kind of a no-brainer. There's a lot of single family within that area already, so single-family homes or town homes would be great, and apartments would be great as well. Now again, discussions with the city, and they are just preliminary, you know, they see no issue with single family or town homes coming forward for that area. They said, quite frankly, apartments may be a little challenging at this time. It's just more of a political issue for that community than not, but doesn't mean that that's out of the question, right? So it's just some of those education and things that we'll have to go through if it's something you guys decide to proceed with in the future. Move to the next slide. In addition, we talked to brokers, again, who don't have an interest, you know, in coming out and selling your property for you, because we want to talk about what is the ability for you to sell your property as-is today? So you guys decide to pick up, you're going to move over to Metcalf, what are you going to do with this building if you just want to sell it to an end user that can come in and reuse it? So we're finding out what the numbers and possibilities are with regards to that. In additions, we've talked about, you know, I think that it was thrown out, could you do a land lease for the site and just retain it? We've talked about that. Or could you guys be landlords? Would you want to be landlords? And what would that net you out at the end of the day? So we're reviewing that as well with the folks that are out there. So again, you know, we're, we'll be coming forward on the 23rd with some pretty detailed options and financial implications for you to review. And if we can go to the next slide. Right now, we're, we're looking at eight options, which still even have a couple tangents in there. So we really said, let's, let's really look at this holistically and maybe even things you didn't think about were possible or could do, why don't we just talk about it all? And then we can see at the end of the day, really, what would work for the site and what works best for you. So of course, option number one is you stay in place here, you know, and then you look to maybe move some of your other facilities over here, and then you make decisions what you want to do with Metcalf or some of your other facilities. Second one is, if you can jump down two slides, Lisa, we'll go back to the property slide, you could sell off a portion. So as we look at Diamond Head up on the, the screen there, essentially over the, closer to the Ames Center and the city's public parking lot, you know, you've got a lot of parking lot, right? So could we sell outlots, right? Well, you'd be amazed, when you look at those, your furthest one to the north is a little over an acre, the other one's almost two acres, you can, you can put a lot of building on that. And so, you know, would there be a possibility that you sell it maybe for an apartment development? Or would you sell it for another type of use that's out there? Again, what are your options to try and capitalize existing property that you have that maybe you can get some dollars to put to work for you in other ways? We could look to sell the property for redevelopment, but maybe we have them build a new facility for you on site, right? So I think in, if you look at your building and facility that you have today, you know, you've had to kind of retrofit into something that if you were to build new today, this isn't how it would lay out. It doesn't necessarily work the best for you and for your programming. So could we get that building on site here for you? So could we get that building on site here for you, sell off the rest of the land, and help you get into that building for some, some number, you know, whatever that may be? So we're putting those together. You could sell the property for redevelopment, but have a facility built that maybe houses a portion. Now I know that comes with, you know, some consternation of the fact that one of the great things about being here is your co-location, right? You've brought everybody together all under one roof, which is really great, and it's a big policy decision for you. But again, we say, maybe you only want portion of it, and what implications are there with regards to that? Again, that's a decision and we can put numbers with that. The other one is we could retain the property and release it to another user, and you could move to Metcalf as described. You could retain the property under a land lease. Both options, probably six and seven are becoming more apparent to be less likely for you, but we'll see that when it comes out with the numbers. And the final one is, you know, you could stay in place, but you could sell maybe a portion of Metcalf, you know, to get some dollars, again, to move some other programming here. And then part of the discussion is, you know, that, that, that give and take of figuring out, you know, what happens if enrollment really does increase and you need to have a junior high facility, you know? Again, not building any vacant land in any of these cities, so do you retain a portion that can maybe accommodate your facilities that you need? So again, with all of these, there comes a lot of issues, pros and cons, and there's going to be numbers tied to it. And what we know and understand is that the financial decision is one small aspect. You know, I think probably some of your bigger decision points are policy and how you want to view how you're going to act as a, as an organization and your facilities, and as a manager in the future with regards to that. And then I think just the rest of the slides for tonight, we're just checking in with you. You know, an update, I know, again, you guys have lots of questions and thoughts, and so we just want to make sure that we can listen to what you have to say, make sure we're getting the information that you want to see, so that when we come back on the 23rd, we got everything that you wanted, so that you can actually start having a discussion and make an informed decision on how you want to proceed moving forward. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions after, I think Jenny was just going to give a little perspective on process, so, from the city's perspective.
I don't have a PowerPoint or anything, thank you for having me. I'm Jenny Faltnier, the Community Development Director at the city of Burnsville, and happy to be before you again, not talking about landfills, right? So just want to talk to you a little bit about city processes, I understand that's come up here and in dialogue, and this is something that we do a lot at the city, I do a lot of it, have done it for over 25 years. Here in Burnsville, if you sell for a redevelopment project as part of the city's process, it would likely be certainly a public hearing with our planning commission. And then as part of that process, when we review applications, we would treat this like any other application, likely have a neighborhood meeting, we do that on a lot of our projects because we want to hear from the neighbors before it gets to the planning commission or city council, and we want to try to address most of their issues. So as part of our process, that just would, would be standard, so. And then my, and then certainly there's other outreach that can be done, we've talked to Dr. Battle about working with the chamber and engaging their public policy committee for... Okay. Sorry about that. And engaging their public policy committee as need be, depending on what happens here once the options are narrowed, to give folks something to react to. That's usually a lot better than asking folks what they want, you're going to get a bazillion answers, right? So with that, I'm here also to stand for any questions, and if there's any information from the city that you think would guide your decision-making that you would need for the 23rd, happy to hear that and make sure you get what you need from the city.
We have some other slides with other information that we've gathered internally, would you like me to go through those next?
Sure.
So as we go on just a little bit further, I have included a link here to this school closing state statute, so that's available for anyone wanting to review that again, and that is something that we will keep in, in mind, right, as we go through this process. Additionally, we have been working to develop the amount of dollars that we're talking about for each of the six buildings that we have in our, what we consider open facilities. And so as we review those, what this process meant was taking the debt issuances that we have, taking a look at exactly how much debt is there still remaining, principal and interest as the statute calls for, and applying to that then, the percentages you see in the bottom part of the screen, which are the percentages of which the proceeds from those bonds were utilized in each of these six buildings that we're discussing. So based on that percentage of how much of those bond proceeds were used in each of those buildings, that percentage is then applied to the debt remaining that you see on the left side, and then the right box is what you see then, is the calculation of what is that number? So for instance, on Cedar, which is the last column on the far right, and at the very top you see as of February 2nd, 2020, we have 5,254,795 of principal and interest that we would still essentially owe on Cedar Building for the debt issuances. And this is a combination of all of the debt issuances that we have with the percentages applied appropriately. With that information, I want to show you on the next slide, Cedar is a building in which we have been leasing it and renting this, right? So what this means for us is, right now, we're applying this in the event that we want to extend this lease, you know? We're going to take a look at this and we're going to say, alright, so our debt remaining as of June 30, 2020, is the 5,254,795. The rent that we will have received by then, because we have a monthly schedule, I know what that amount is, is 1,573,510. We've had this lease in place for, for nine years, okay? So with that in mind, that leaves 3,681,285 dollars still that we need to recover and deposit into our debt service fund, so that that goes back to our taxpayers before the money would then move to our general fund capital proceeds. So if that helps to, to kind of clear as to exactly how does this come into play, and why would we use this information? Similarly, you'd apply it if you were dealing with sale proceeds, right?
Are we allowed to ask a question yet?
Why don't we let them get through the presentation and then we can ask all the questions? Yep, yep.
Then the next thing that we wanted to provide to you is a summary of our long-term facility maintenance information. So you know that you approve every year our plan for 10 years out. And so what I've asked is for our Director of Operations to go through, and he basically pulled together a summary of everything that we have on that particular long-term facility maintenance project list, and show exactly what those dollar amounts are for each of the buildings that we still have on our open facilities listing. So you see that attached as well. Now, he wanted me to make sure you understood and were reminded of the fact that although something may be on the list, if when we get to that year in which it's supposed to be being done, or he's actually a year ahead all the time planning for that, the, the idea is, well, okay, so if it says re-roof, but the roof doesn't need to be re-roofed, we don't have any issues, it goes on this list when the warranty's up. So if there's no real issue with the roof, we'll push it back, and we'll move up something else that is more pertinent. Does that make sense? And so that's, that's an ongoing thing that we will do, and this is fluid. The idea behind this is for us to kind of, and you can see that you've got, when we look at our levy information, we're always using a set dollar amount for our projects, and that's what we're trying to stay within. So as he moves a project out, he is moving the same dollar amount basically forward so that we can then make sure we're staying level with our taxpayers. So this is the information shared to you, just so that you have that. I also want to point out that there was some conversation around what's in addition for Eagle Ridge Middle School, without having this verified by any architects, but just going based off from what we have developed in the past and what we've seen done in our district, this is not necessarily market rate for whenever this may happen, but at this point in time, a number's being developed of $13 million, just as a starting point, right? Far more work would need to be done to verify that number, but that does take dollars to determine that verification of that number too. So before we put the money forward there, we want to know that that's something that we want to delve deeper into. And then we have a slide here regarding our, our possible staff and community engagement. So much of this is going to be based upon what it is that's decided on any one or multiple buildings, right? And so as a few of those examples, you know, we can meet possibly with the affected staff members, say it's just a particular building, for example, that you're, you're really discussing, or maybe it is holding that informational sessions for constituents who are involved in that particular arena, that area of the, of the location, or whatever may be the case, hosting informational sessions with groups, specific groups, and as Jenny mentioned, the city does this all the time in their standard process, and how they reach out is really important. And so those are just some examples that we wanted to make sure we had in here. And the, the staff and community engagement, you know, maybe focus groups, maybe parent and staff meetings, could be presentations. Our timeline in April is when we would be looking on the 23rd to hear more detailed information, receive our final report regarding Diamond Head Education Center from Ellers, and then, you know, there's, there's various timelines that would depend upon what is that decision that would then move into practice. There's, there's many different thoughts of how we might internally utilize space, some of which takes dollars to do so, and so then it's a question of, well, before we can do that or should do that, where would those funds be coming from? And that may be what causes some of the other further conversations. So there's a lot that is like a domino effect, right? And so we are aware of that, know that, we do know our outside facilities as we move forward will need to be maintained. So our intent is that grounds will be maintained, okay? Outside use of our facilities, fields and things of that nature, assuming there's not a reason like the pipeline project going on, would be available through, for rentals if we were in operation, other than what we are now today. But the reality is that that's our intent. The inside of the buildings that may be dormant or not being functional at the time, those, that's where, that would take quite a bit of conversation about making sure that whoever's renting it knows and understands the necessity of what the cost is to cover that custodial to, to utilize that, that location. In some cases, that may be no problem, in other cases, it might be a hindrance. And so we'll need to discuss that with the potential opportunities that we may have as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Questions? Leslie?
Back to the slide on the lease of Cedar example, that, the rent received and deposited for effective June 30th is only representative of half the building use?
Yes.
So if, if one of their proposals was for full building use, would, what would that amount look like to pay down that debt?
Right, if, so over a nine-year period, we're at 1.5, assuming we would use similar rates, the other portion of the building that we're using a little bit more than half ourselves, they have a little less than half, depending upon how they would, you know, use that full building, for example, let's just say it doubled, you know, you'd have this covered then within another 10 to 10 years. And at, at that point in time, then it would be, the debt would be covered.
Okay, great. Anyone else?
Darcy.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple of questions. So on the slide of Diamond Head, just the, yeah, that one, Diamond Head, yep, what are, yep, what are the stars, what's the star property?
Chair Commissioners, so that, the stars that we show up there right now are three properties where you have, one, the red star is a multifamily development that is currently under construction, the yellow and the green are ones that have been sold for development of multifamily housing as well. So we're being cognizant of what's happening in the area, but also they're providing for comparisons for us for your property as well.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I have more.
Yep, go ahead.
All right, thanks. So, okay, then on the Ellers process, the next slide, then, Ellers process, sorry, no, the first one about, keep going, all the way up to the beginning of this?
To the beginning.
Yeah, to the beginning, yeah. So it's what, slide four or five? So after the first Diamond Head... Yep, okay, no, go back. Yep, there.
Right here.
Yep, and so, the conclusions at the bottom, Deck is a great redevelopment site, things like that, that, those look like, those are conclusions that were drawn from this second meeting that Ellers had conversations with additional developers, is that accurate?
Chair Board Member, no, that's not accurate. That's from meetings with all the six developers that we had, and then additional discussions that we had with other folks.
Okay, so, okay, so it was, it looks like it was just from those meetings, so that's, wow, okay, thank you. And so this mixed retail, okay, so the same slide, this is limited retail potential, does that mean strictly retail, like everything on the, on the site would be retail? Is that, is that what limited retail potential means?
Chair Board Member, what that means is that essentially you wouldn't sell that whole eleven and a half acres if you chose to move for retail, because there wouldn't be enough retail use or demand for the site. So limited retail will typically mean anywhere from probably 5,000 to 25,000 square feet of retail use that they would see as being feasible potentially.
Okay, and so that's, so, so strictly retail, and so there's, as you, as you pointed on a previous slide, there is one of those sites, the red, the red star site is both housing and retail, it's retail, lower level, housing above.
Chair Board Member, I'll look to Jenny because she's more familiar with that.
Right, is that, is that correct?
If I can, Madam Chair, is it Commissioner or Directors?
Yeah.
Directors, yes, thank you.
It's Darcy.
Okay. Directors are here. Yeah. Okay, so that is, it does have a, I think it is about 1,200 or 1,500 square feet of retail on the first floor, but the rest is all apartments on the first floor. So it is primarily multifamily development with a small area carved out for perhaps a coffee shop or dry cleaners or something like that.
Okay, because certainly that, you know, there's, there's more mixed use, usage that's going up. There's another, there's a site next to the premium outlets in, in Eagan, that is the same thing, small, you know, retail on the bottom, you know, mixed use above, you know, things like that, we see more and more of that around. And so, so my question, so I guess sort of, you know, because there's a little bit of that, you know, was, was that mixed use idea brought into the conversation with this? Okay, and where does that lie in the, in this list here?
That's in your limited retail.
Oh, okay.
Answer, or your limited office answer.
Okay, um, okay, sorry, so, and I apologize, I'm sure this is, the fact that I am not a property person, but, so, here, the, the discussions with the developers then said, here we have, we have this 11.5 acre site, what can we, what can we do with this? And the developers, all six plus however many other ones you met with, said, it's a great redevelopment site, and overall multifamily is the way to go with this, because we don't see this as an entirely retail space, we don't see this as an entirely office space, and we don't see this as a hotel at all, and, but we also don't see this as any sort of mixed retail. Is that right? Or mixed, mixed use of retail and, and housing?
No, no, I would say that there will, there, there's the potential for mix of both housing and retail on the site. Again, everyone said multifamily's your driver, and so you may have some space carved out either on a separate parcel for some retail, or it may be integrated into the base of the building.
Okay.
Which would be a vertical mixed use. The other one is a...
Vertical mixed use, thank you.
Vertical mixed use versus horizontal mixed use.
That's the term I need, okay, super, thank you. Learning so much tonight, okay, great. So, okay, so then the options slide that we have, options under review. And so I guess, so this, the focus that you have been doing, the discussions that we've been having to do are just about Deck and Metcalf, is that correct? We didn't really, because I don't see references here to River, or limited, you know, references to River Ridge, nothing to Sioux Trail, MW Savage, a little bit about Cedar School.
Correct, so main focus has been on the Deck, secondary with Metcalf, and then I'd say third with River Ridge, that's a different transaction, that's, you know, that would just be sold outright if you chose to move out of that to somebody else likely, so.
Okay, so then, so that, the information that we're getting back on that 23rd, Lisa, is, is just going to be about Deck, essentially?
I would say that we'll have information about Deck, we'll have some numbers to tie to Metcalf for, for options, and then we'll also probably have a range of value for River Ridge for you as well.
Okay, great. And so then, that any sort of school usage, things like that, is an entirely separate process and discussion that we haven't got to?
Not a part of what we've asked in our scope of work with Ellers.
Sure.
Internally, we may have some other ideas and certainly some feedback that, once our team can really focus on that, we can kind of develop better.
Okay.
So much of that, though, does depend, what is it that we're doing with that?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, I totally get it's a chicken and egg thing all over the place.
It is, yeah.
Yeah, I, I have no, I have no concerns about that. And so I'm really glad that the city's been a part of this, that's really, that's great, I, I appreciate that. And I'm assuming then, as we move forward with questions about, as you quite correctly pointed out, Metcalf is not part of Burnsville, and so I'm assuming there is additional information then coming from the city of Burns, or city of Eagan regarding the Metcalf site as well, correct?
So, so Stacy, you want to go ahead?
Yeah, so I did have preliminary discussions with their Community Development Director over there, just about the future use.
So, again, their feedback is already on a preliminary basis that single-family townhome development is something that would be a likely reuse for that site. Uh, if you wanted to have someone that came in that was interested in doing some apartments or something else, that may be a little more challenging, uh, just from a political standpoint right now, but not, uh, not to ever say no. So, anything's possible.
Sure, okay, yeah.
So, what we've gotten for numbers for there, we've talked to single-family housing developers to try and get some pricing or estimates for that area as to what's your viability if you chose to go down that path.
Okay, great, and so, and so they were not interested in retail, anything for that, for that Metcalf space?
It's, it's a limited site as well, so.
Okay, great, all right, thank you, that's all the questions I have, thank you very much.
And, um, just for clarification too, since Darcy raised the question of the city of Eagan, is it, is it fair to say that, um, looking at, if I look at slide nine and then compare it to slide seven, we shouldn't expect an apples-to-apples comparison in terms of, based on how the, the land is already zoned? Like, the conversation about a hotel would not be likely?
Correct.
For Metcalf? Okay, great. Other questions? Eric?
Yep, thank you. Zoning, real quick, are all the properties zoned the same? And does it really, well, in the case that you just mentioned, Cheryl, that, that would matter, but, um, does it particularly matter how Deck here is zoned? I mean, I assume we, we could change the zone if need be to fit the...
Uh, Madam Chair, Director Miller, um, the zoning could be changed, but the zoning in place right now is heart of the city, which does maximize the type of land use that you can get on this property compared to other zoning districts that we have in the city.
So, this is not zoned as a school or whatever Metcalf, what do you, what did you call Metcalf again?
Uh, public or institutional, that may be the overlay that they have on it.
Because it was a school here at one time, so I assume it was that.
Correct, the zoning is heart of the city, which is a transit-oriented development, high-density development is what we call for that.
Good. Can we go back to the picture with, um, Diamond Head? The S, and the stars and such? So, I, um, fully appreciate that a lot of work and research, and, and I've done a little bit of inquiry myself with commercial development folks I know, outside of the context that they support quite a lot of what you're saying. But there's also, I have a little bit of a gut feel about some of this. Uh, you know, if you're, the red, yellow and green stars indicate additional, um, multi, uh, or single dwell, single home dwelling you said coming in, right?
Multifamily.
Those are multifamily.
Apartments.
Apartments, okay. But, um, you know, I recently started working, uh, south of the river again in Burnsville, and it's my observation that there's actually a dearth of places to eat lunch around here in the Burnsville. I know you have quite a few restaurants and such, but, uh, and we have sort of one, um, primary restaurant to go eat out with family and, you know, with Mediterranean Grill. It just feels like if we're gonna be bringing more and more people into the area, there will be more and more opportunities for small retail restaurants, um, you know, other, other supportive things in the heart of the city area. I know you guys are, it's no ding on what you guys have been doing, the work here, but, uh, I think it feels like there could be more going on around here. So, that's just an observational thing. The second thing is, you know, every time, we, we have a lot of, uh, a lot of, um, customers and employees that come and travel in and out of our offices, and, uh, they all stay up at the Mall of America. There's, there's no, there's no hotel facility in Burnsville for them. So, I challenge a little bit this idea that they're, you know, a nicer, um, medium to higher-end hotel wouldn't be supportive in the area, but, um, anyway. Lisa, this is, I think more for you. Um, I think I had asked about this before, I'm still kind of waiting to hear about it. I am sort of looking for a, um, cost, opportunity cost for Diamond Head. So, if you assume that any, any activities that we offer here could potentially be moved somewhere else, then I don't think that there's, you can, I think we can pretty safely say that Diamond Head doesn't generate any kind of income directly itself. Uh, again, I know there's, um, community ed activities and things that happen here that we charge fees for and all that, but those could probably take, you know, all things given equal, pick up and go somewhere else and continue to function, so. And that income would come in. So, Diamond Head itself is not necessarily generating any, any income, to my knowledge, that's unique to the building. So, take that as step one of the equation. This, the next step would be, I want to understand what, if we did nothing, there's gotta be some sort of cost, whether it's ongoing, um, you know, um, uh, interest on debt or, you know, on time period, whether it's, um, maintenance costs, um, whatever it is, there's, you know. So, for me, that's kind of the number, because frankly, if someone came in and offered us $1 for the building and we could walk away with no further obligations to the building, all these other things considered, that might be good enough for me, because we don't have to absorb those other costs, those shadow costs in the future. Does that, does that make sense?
I'm not sure I'm following exactly, let me see if I can re-paraphrase. Um, so you're suggesting that should we be able to move everything to another location and function the same opportunities, like ABE could still facilitate the same number of courses they do here, community ed programming can happen just like they do here elsewhere?
Well, you're, don't get too tied up on that. All I'm saying is, I'm making an assumption that the building itself isn't a income generator for the district.
I think the, the, what we have to offer here in this building and what has been developed goes a long ways towards the quality of programming that is offered. And so that is something that I would encourage people not to discount. To pick it up and move this to, say, two buildings, uh, say Metcalf and Sioux Trail, to accommodate our early learners who wouldn't work very well in, in a Metcalf setting without some modification, and the rest of us could be in the more of the adult setting, fine. But we have, you know, two spaces downstairs that are wood floors and that are our seniors and our, our, um, courses that are for ballet, yoga, those kinds of things. They work there, they may not work so well somewhere else. Um, ABE, from where they were to where they are now, we have at least doubled, if not tripled, the programs and offerings that we have for our community, mostly because of the ability for us to serve them like we are, compared to how we were. So, we've put a lot of money into this building over the last five, six years, and I just want to make sure that people understand that that's been a benefit, that there has been an increase in the programmings that we can offer. If we move to another location, sure, we can do the core structure of what we're talking about for community ed, we can, we can function as a team. Um, the challenge, I think, is there's gonna be moving costs. So, as we moved from River Ridge building over here to this location, just, you know, that's about maybe a half, if not maybe a third of the people that are here currently, we know what that cost us, to take down the furniture, to bring it back over here and put it back up. And we tried to reuse every piece we had, we did have to buy some additional pieces. That is a cost. When we temporarily move, permanently move, that's gonna be a cost for us, no matter what. Um, there is a, a cost for that redevelopment of whatever space that our little ones are moving to if they don't have what they need. So, in most cases, they will, oftentimes what we're talking about are restrooms. You know, whether it's because of the sizing of the, of the restrooms or whether it's because of the frequency that they're available, you know? Um, so that's something to consider. For adults, that, it's really more just about to move us, you know, and, and get us set up again. I'm not sure if that's answering your question. So, we have those costs, and those were incorporated previously in our estimates. They are based on what we know from what it took when we moved previously, and basically considering the volume now that we would be moving if all of us from this building are moving, because only about, I'd say a good third is what we moved here. So, previously, um, that number was much smaller. We do have the costs of what it would be for projects in this building, we have them for the other buildings. We can put all of that together, it really can, if you get just a dollar for this building, somehow we gotta pay for those other costs. And that's what I worry about, just because I know where the general funds at.
Uh, and, and Chair Director, just maybe to get to what your point is, I think part of that will be in the analysis, 'cause I think what you're getting at is this existing building's gonna have capital needs, right? You know, from parking lots to roofs to other things. So, you know, that's part of what comes in, is that if you choose to stay, there's a cost of staying as well, right, for the future? And that balances within everything else, uh, that's out there, so.
Cost of staying is exactly what I'm saying. It's a great way of phrasing it, but it's more than capital costs. Um, you know, there's a lot of stuff that goes in. We own an 11 and a half acre piece of property in the middle of a major metropolitan city. That, that has to have some sort of cost over time. I get that's very intangible and hard to nail down, but I don't like looking at this simply as, um, you know, well, if we just stay here, um, you know, we're not incurring a cost in that scenario also, because we are by keeping that extra 11 and a half acres inside of the portfolio of our ownership.
And on a related note, um, and Dr. Battle, you were gonna say something. On the community ed piece, um, I think in terms of the intangibles, Eric, that you were getting at, you know, there are, you know, dollar costs and there are, you know, opportunity costs. It's been a while, I'm aware that there is research out there about community ed and its, its efficacy in, um, retaining, you know, a, a strong community ed program helps to retain families within a particular district. If you can either speak to that or maybe have that worked into that, I, I mean, I, I know I don't know as much as you do about community ed, but I'm aware that, that there are certain intangible benefits there too. Did you have any?
Yep, no, that'll do, thank you.
Any other? Leslie, did you?
I'm...
You're thinking, okay, got it.
Formulating.
Jen or Scott, did you?
I think I'm okay for now.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Well, well, it's gonna, I was, what, what I'm interested in gathering is understanding where, um, what makes sense for the, for the programs that, that are essential for us to offer and making sure that they're in the allocation that is the most ideal. So, and then also then, bringing that into what opportunities do we have to actually earn additional revenue, whether it's selling off a parcel, whether it's selling, you know, Metcalf in its entirety, you know, because if, if, you know, again, the chicken and the egg thing. So, it's like, if, if we let 917 have all of Cedar School, what makes the best sense for BAZ? We, I, I've heard already that best would easily transition into this building and then therefore make more usage within this building. So, we could sell outright River Ridge, so looking at whatever that financial benefit would be. And then if we were to sell off in its entirety Metcalf, knowing that we had heard from, uh, Stephanie White that we would function well as a two-middle-school district with the opportunity to expand on one of the middle schools if we grow. And then, knowing, I'm an Eagan resident, um, and then hearing a lot of the, a lot of the criticisms about the blight in that area, that bringing in housing might actually help with that curb appeal, if you will, of that corner. Um, and then that would potentially bring in additional income and then center here. The only question that I would have outlying out of that is what would we do with BAZ? Like, where, where would BAZ be best retrofitted, um, if we were to stay? And then also because, um, Director Courier isn't here, I will speak on behalf of the benefit of this building and on the seniors, 'cause we don't want to lose the senior center. And so, uh, we really wanna, I, and that's a concern for me too, because I know that that is something that is well-used in this building and is actually a central point for our seniors. And so, I don't want to discount our senior population that we're serving.
Can we, can, one, can you go back to the Metcalf, uh, satellite shot again?
Sure.
Or whatever that is, airshot?
Oops, this one?
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, there's, I was shocked, it's 35 acres. There's a lot of land there, I mean, we could squeeze a row of houses or two in there, a street, you know, and still keep the building in the capacity to expand back to a middle school at some point. Um, you know, sell off a chunk of that. I know we don't have enough baseball programs to support that many baseball fields anymore. Uh, that's a lot of land, I did not realize it was that big, so, thank you for that.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, if I can, while we're on this slide, I think it was noted to me in a previous conversation as part of this that there were questions about what was happening with the Riverview Center next to Metcalf. Did this, did you have questions about?
Oh, yeah, we had that, yeah, yeah. I, I, I think you remember you saying that there was some sort of opportunity or something moving with that group.
Just if I can, while, while I'm here, and you have me and I have you. Um, so, that certainly is on the city's radar as well. This is owned by a, a private individual, the city personally, we've reached out to them to see if...
This area?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Lisa. Um, shopping center that's in a distressed state, as we know, and it's not for sale. And, um, we sent several developers to him, um, very well-reputable developers. And, um, the price is extremely high, unreasonable, out of market. So, we are keeping an eye on this, certainly should things change. Um, we're all at the ready to see something else happen there, have that put to higher and better use for the neighborhood. And it's, it's, we're keeping, making sure that they're in compliance with our property maintenance codes, albeit their minimum standards, but, um, they gotta mow the lawn and, uh, do certain things there that, to keep it from falling in a complete state of disrepair. But, um, we're doing, we do know that, and I want to recognize that and let you know that, um, it's, our, our hands are kind of, it's a tough situation, 'cause it is privately held with a seller that's not willing to, or, excuse me, an owner that's not willing to sell.
I had questions, actually, probably all over the place.
Well, while you pull those up, thank you, because acknowledge that you, you have a bad hand there, because you get that little triangle, and then Eagan gets all the houses over to the, the right there, so.
And we get the gas pumps at Super America, and they get the building.
So, on Metcalf, um, I guess, I wonder, and I know that you've had only very preliminary conversations with the city of Eagan, and this might actually require some, some more face-to-face meetings with them. But, I would be interested in understanding, um, you know, they've said either single-family or townhomes. Um, what is their vision for that? I, I know that, and they're also working on their, their comp plan.
Right.
And that's still preliminary, we know that there's some transit that's gonna, it sounds like it's gonna go in there, but, is there, is there a preference from the city in terms of whether it's single-family or townhomes? Have we explored, and I guess this is more, Lisa, for you and Stacy, whether it's selling off a portion of, um, the land at Metcalf and keeping the school, or, um, knowing that it's the oldest middle school, um, in the district and to honor its history? Are there other opportunities for other organizations to come in and buy it outright and renovate it and use it for something else? That would be something I would be interested in, in hearing more about. I mean, we could certainly talk about selling off the entire plot of land. Because 35, even, even though it's not in, it's clearly not in the heart of the city, but it's a very large chunk of land, in terms of what, what opportunity there is realistically to get out of that property compared to the heart of the city and what, as well as, um, have homes with children and families in them. I mean, that's kind of, I think we need to be thinking about what we're doing to, to encourage families to, to move here.
Talked about needing to bring back Sioux Trail, if we had the families there.
Right, yeah, bring back Sioux Trail.
So, if I may, just where the, on the right-hand side where the picture cuts off, I believe that is where in Eagan they are, they, there is development plans that came through for, um, right along Ron Road there, for that to have, or, I'm sorry, Nichols Road. Nichols, um, it will have, um, apartment, um, an apartment building will be built along there. It's a four-story, I believe, um, multifamily development.
And another, I, I, I know that it's not zoned for a hotel, but that seems like a really logical place to have a, a hotel, given that the outlets are there.
Five minutes from the Mall of America.
It's, and it's five minutes from the Mall of America. It, I mean, the city knows how best to zone its, its, its space, but it certainly is a wondering that I had.
They just, there was two hotels that are just gone, or at least one that, um, at that one.
Right.
And so, there's, you know, just building, yeah.
Oh, yeah, and the Vikings too, that's true, yeah.
Uh, Chair, just to, to, sorry to interrupt, but, you know, it's a good point that you brought up, that's one of the things we didn't have in the options, 'cause the options we were looking at, you know, yeah, you could sell all of it, or the other option was, do you sell just a portion and maybe, you know, either mothball the building, or do you just demolish it but keep enough if you ever had to build another new school?
Right, right, yeah.
So, it's another good addition to say, is there the feasibility to sell and market? So, we can add that.
Uh, oh, and just for clarification, in terms of the proceeds from the sale of a property, we basically have one of two options, and that's to either apply it to debt or go to legislators and ask for a legislative exception, to be able to use it for something else.
Yep, so, once, the first thing it does, it goes to debt. Um, if you can see on, let's see, Metcalf is $8.2 million as of February 2nd, 2020. But let's say MW Savage, for example, that's $2 million. So, you know, in that case, you, you satisfy that debt with any proceeds, and then anything above and beyond would then go into the general fund capital. And so, if barring other legislation, yes.
Gotcha. And have we, what conversations have we had with the county in terms of opportunities for life cycle housing and, and what that, how that might impact anything that we're talking about?
Chair, board members, we haven't had any discussions with the CDA with regards to that. But I mean, we're well-integrated with them, you know. They do their own housing, their own senior housing development that they do, you know, I don't know if they're gonna be a player in the market or not, but we're happy to have those discussions with them, so.
Well, and not just, I mean, life cycle, not just seniors, so we're talking about all the different events that happen to people when life or a pandemic happens, right?
Yep, yep. And I think that really comes down to more to local preference in zoning and what people's goals are.
And is, does the city have a preference?
Madam Chair, we're open to anything that would intensify the density, thinking of this site here.
Yep, yep.
And certainly, all various types of housing could be a part of it. It, it just kinda depends on what the CDA wants to do, but the city's open to exploring that with them.
Gotcha.
Certainly can do that.
Are there any other questions from board members? I have a couple of, like, broad-scope topics that I wanted to bring up. Yeah. So, I guess at this point, it probably would be helpful for us to provide some sort of guidance to feed into the report as far as our preferences as to who might use the land, whatever might happen to it. So, for instance, whether we're leasing or selling space, do we care if we have competition coming in? That's the biggest, that, that's probably the biggest concern that I myself have.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yes, I care.
Yeah, we don't, we don't want a competitor to come in on our property.
Right, so private schools and charters and other school districts outside of nine seventeen, of which we're a partner, but we kinda wanna make sure we're, we're keeping our kids and our students here. Okay. And just throwing it out there for general discussion, also to our presenters, yeah.
I guess I have a caveat to what you can say.
Yes, yep.
Talk about, I guess the exception to that for me, though, would be a community college or some, someone that would be a partner for us.
Oh, for our students to get credits.
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
That would be my caveat to the competitor. I would say that more than a partner.
Good thinking, yeah, yeah.
Probably not. K-12.
Yep.
Or pre-K, or pre-K, E-12, yeah, yeah. In terms of community input with every, with the pandemic now, we need to think creatively about how we're going to get community input, and I'm sure that that's something that you'll be talking about, and it, you know, certainly Stacy wouldn't, I don't know that it would necessarily be part of your work, but it's something that, that this board needs to consider. I don't know if folks have any thoughts.
I, I question, I'm absolutely about transparency, but I do question what we're meaning by community involvement at this point, because we really don't have, you know, we've narrowed it down a bit, but we still have a pretty wide spectrum on what we're talking about.
Right, and I guess I should have prefaced it by saying, you know, once we've narrowed ourselves down-
Yeah, that I agree with.
-to a couple of different options.
There's a proposal or proposals.
We have a proposal or two.
Okay.
Then the, the neighborhoods or the, the policy chamber. Yes, Stacy?
Yeah, with the full understanding that we can do as much as we could do within current health, you know, I mean, we can't do our public meetings and, you know, things like that, that we would like to do. It would be as much information and community involvement as we could gather under safety.
Maybe we do a webinar or presentation that we open up to whoever wants to come and give people an opportunity to ask questions in a chat or unmute them or some, something.
Something, yeah.
There are possibilities.
Or through the online form, formats that we've been gathering.
Yeah, but I think a presentation also would be.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Both.
But in addition to that, definitely.
And then I guess I also, I mean, depending on the information that we receive from elders, obviously we'll have other conversations following that, but right now, we're looking exclude, well, pretty exclusively at Diamond Head and Metcalf. It might even be possible for us to make another decision, you know, in terms of, you know, once we know Diamond Head, Metcalf, what about River Ridge?
Right, so, sorry, I understood River Ridge to be a sell-only option.
Right.
Is that right?
Right.
Okay, all right.
So, as long as that comes back with everything, yeah.
That's one of the dominos, depending on the other decisions.
It's one of our chickens or eggs.
Don't count them yet.
Yeah, that's it. Anything else? Anybody? Nope. Thank you, Jenny. Thank you, Stacy, Lisa.
Thank you.
Looking forward to getting the report. All right. Next, we will receive a, this is, would be a SPA presentation on High School Pathways from Amina Oftodal. Do you need a couple of minutes, Amina? You're gonna get, okay.
Ready when you are. Superintendent, Chair, members of the board, I'd like to share with you some, some really great things that we're doing, and some update of opportunities that we're offering to our high school students through our High School Pathways program. Purpose of today's presentation is really to look at, just a quick background look at the high school pathways, look at our, some data related to our college credit acquisition, thinking about pathways and partnerships, and just a quick snapshot of what's on the docket for the next couple of years for the future of the pathways and how we're continuing to build that out. So, starting just very quickly with the Vision 191, we were able to not only do some capital changes to the high school, but also really develop the courses through the partnerships to allow students to work towards the four career fields. And we used the Minnesota Career Fields clusters and pathways, that overarching career and technology education format and division into the career fields that comes from the Department of Ed, and we really combined them into four pathways for our students. So, that's where we are with the pathway model. Students, of course, choose courses based on their interests, and they can then engage more fully as eleventh and twelfth graders and follow the pathway to an industry certificate or a preparation for a career or college study going forward. The, the purpose of the pathways is really to create those opportunities for students and to really offer a, a large number of courses that align with one or more of the pathways. At this time, seventy-six percent of our courses are aligned directly to a pathway, and not just health sciences, but a specific courses within those and career directions for those. Using that as a model, knowing that we're trying to prepare students for career and college, we wanted to kind of take a look at how are we allowing students to earn college credits, to acquire those college credits while they are also working toward their high school diploma? We really want to create that opportunity in a couple of different ways. One, we want to make sure that our students have experiences with high-rigor courses aligned with college expectations, so that students are prepared to be successful in their post-secondary education. Secondly, knowing that currently almost eighty percent of our students who are leaving college now with a degree are leaving with debt that will take them over ten years to repay. Eighty percent. So, what we want to do is make sure that our students and families have the opportunity to get a head start and use all of the tools available to them to mitigate some of those college costs. We offer five different ways that students can earn and acquire college credits during their time in high school. The first one is advanced placement, in which students are instructed with a certain content, very high-rigor content, and then to earn their college credit, students are given a, a national exam, and colleges accept those exam scores as credit based on what the number of the score is on a scale of one to five. College in the schools is where our credentialed staff offer through partnership college courses for students in the high school using our, our staff. And students then earn those college credits based on a, an appropriate grade for the, for the course. We also offer concurrent enrollment. These are courses that are, students are directly enrolled in one of our higher ed partners. Currently, we have Normandale and Inver Hills as two of our partners. They allow us to offer their courses here on campus. We also have articulation courses. These are courses in which the content is articulated with one of our higher ed partners, and students, when they earn a, a appropriate grade in that, in that class, can apply for the college credit from the, from the institution. And this includes not only Inver Hills, not only Normandale, but also Dakota County Technical College. So, there's a, a lot of different options there, and the articulation can be with other schools as well. Post-secondary enrollment options, this is the option that students take to earn their credits at the college site. So, they take that portion or all of their enrollment and they move to the college site and take courses directly from, from the college. Those are some of the different options, and that's available to all eleventh and twelfth graders and tenth graders, depending on what courses they're, they choose, they can be in CTE fields. So, when we take a look at the rigorous coursework and the number of students that are involved, the chart in front of you shows the number of unique students, so they are not double-counted if they are taking more than one course. This is the number of unique students. In twenty eighteen nineteen, you can see the number of students who participated was over a thousand, and these are kids in grades nine through twelve. This year, however, we, as part of our offerings, chose not to offer the combination AP College in the Schools classes, and we saw the number of students who are accessing courses to be only eight hundred and thirty-seven of college-bearing courses. So, we saw a significant drop, and the number of that drop kind, you can see there's some sort of correlation with the number of students who last year were actually enrolled in the AP College in the Schools combo class.
And quick clarification question. With PSEO, the funding follows the student?
In most cases. We do have funding agreements, finance agreements with Inver Hills and Normandale in which they, we get the aid and then they bill us for those, so we don't lose everything.
Got it.
We do also pay for their books, however.
Is some of this related to our budget decisions from last year?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
I think it's also, and in my mind, a issue of equity too, making sure that students who can access the courses while they are on campus have that opportunity. So, taking a look at each of the types of ways that students can earn those college credits, when we take a look at the AP courses, we have twelve courses that we are offering currently this year. Last year, and this is pretty steady trend, we had about thirty percent of our students who were enrolled in AP courses and took the national exam score four or five, which is the score necessary for most colleges and universities to accept as credit. There was a ten percent disparity between the white and our students of color in that achievement. College in the schools, this year we offer six courses for, under the College in the Schools program. Last year, ninety percent of the students who took those courses earned college credit. PSEO, this year, we have twenty-six unique courses in semester one only, in semester one. And of those twenty-six unique courses, twelve of the courses are courses that we also offer at the high school, either as AP College in the Schools or one of the pathway courses. Students are choosing to take them off-campus.
So, does that mean for the other fourteen courses, those are the ones where the funding follows them?
Yes. No, all of, all of them follow them.
All of them.
Just be, what I'm saying is that if they are taking a college-level American history course, we offer an AP or a College in the Schools equivalent of that course on campus. So, they're taking that funding with them for courses that we offer in our schools.
Okay.
And last year, ninety-two percent of the students who took courses in PSEO earned grades that qualified them for college credit. The disparity between the College in the Schools and the PSEO is one of resources. Students who have the resources to transport and attend those colleges are able to do so through PSEO. Those students who do not have those resources are using the AP and the College in the Schools courses. You can see that the attainment, college attainment for those courses in College in the Schools, which are delivered on campus, are the, are essentially the same as the students who earn those credits at, at the colleges of their choice.
I'm willing to suggest that the disparity is not really limited to that. It might be limited, or also include demographics. Is that not correct?
When we looked at the demographics, there wasn't a significant disparity in the demographics of students who were choosing PSEO.
Okay.
And with the AP courses, you have the percentage of who earned the score. How many took the test? And, and what kind of training have our AP instructors been given or encouragement, have they been given to encourage our students to take the test if there seems to be a lag?
Right. We, we provide all of our AP teachers on a cycle, a three-year cycle of the training directly from AP that, that's offered in Minnesota, and that's usually quite rigorous for them, and to, to make sure that they understand what that curriculum is, how do they deliver it, and how do they prepare their students for the test? I think that the trend of the thirty percent, we see, I've seen that as the trend for the last four years, and that's as far back as our data collection goes for, for this particular test. It did not shift. The, the attainment rate didn't shift with the numbers of students who took the test, so when we had, you know, three hundred students who took the test, the thirty percent remained the same as when we had fewer students taking the test.
Is that comparable to other? I mean, is that what we can expect? Is that generally what school districts can expect?
I don't have that exact number for you.
Okay.
I'm not sure I know that.
If you could get that, that would be interesting.
Just to be very clear, thirty percent of the students that took the AP class earned a four or five on the test?
Thirty percent of the students who took the test.
Okay.
Earned thirty percent.
Hundred percent of the students.
I understand that, but that's a very different, okay.
Yeah, it's not every kid in the class. It's just based on the students who returned tests. We also offer concurrent articulated or industry certificate courses within our pathways, and because we have so many of those embedded, I don't really have the figures of how students attained the college credit attainment in that. Some of them don't even apply for their articulation until much later as well, so that data's a little more difficult to track.
That might also be the report we're waiting for from Kathy, right?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, as she collects that, as she collects that.
Sorry.
But when we-
Dr. Battle?
Thank you. Just wanted to make a comment in follow-up to Director Miller's comment. When I worked at the University of Minnesota, and then from a personal experience with one of my children, colleges want access to rigorous courses, sometimes too. That exposure just increases their skills, so my child attended an international- So my child attended an international baccalaureate. She did not go full diploma, which is pretty comparable to taking the test at AP.
Absolutely.
College admissions officers gave her information that just because she took some IB courses, they knew her preparation was solid. So I think we need some information about those children who choose not to take the tests. They still are developing skills.
Yep.
That will carry them in post-secondary. So I'd like to just delve a little further in why some of the students don't take the test.
Sure.
They just, some may just want to be in the class, the rigor, they may have other resources.
Yeah. I think the other piece to kind of remember when we look at the data is that if you look at the number of students who take the AP College in the Schools combo last year, they probably opted out of the test because they had already earned their college credit.
The numbers for AP this year might be very different than they have in the past because they no longer have the CIS option for a lot of those classes.
Unfortunately, if school remains in its closure, we may have to reexamine how those assessments are being administered.
Right.
That will have a significant impact. So when we take a look at those pathway courses, we have 24 courses, and this is the number of unique students who participate in each of those types of courses. Concurrent enrollment also earns them college credit with a grade above a C+. Project Lead the Way is our, a course in which the college credit can be offered for them as well, and the number of articulated credits that were provided were 200 to 298 students. And then in combination with that, students, we had 96 students who also earned industry certificates. Now, they could have also earned college credits, so that's a separate number, because it could be duplicated.
So these are, sorry, these are kids that took, students that took the classes and could get an articulated credit?
Yes.
We don't have any metrics on-
I don't have the metrics for that right now.
-we're actually getting articulated credit. I'm just going to make the assumption that if we have a large amount of students that don't bother to go on a Saturday afternoon to take a test to get a college credit on an AP side, filling out a bunch of paperwork to get the articulated credit post fact is probably going to be a lesser return number.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm guessing it's some hoops they have to jump through to get this credit, right?
They just have to make the application for it, but yeah. So one of the ways that we've been, and I've shared this with you before, is in our partnership with the Greater Twin Cities of the United Way, we received a grant from them for, in 2010? No, 2000, I'm sorry.
Kathy's 16, probably 15 or 16.
15 or 16. So it included significant funding for us to begin and work within our pathways and to make sure that we were offering specific pathways for students in these particular areas. And so their work, their, the grant that they provided to us, really helped us establish these particular pathways for the EMT, also for our teacher externships, and so making it possible that they can go onsite. The counselor one, externships as well, the Student Workplace Skill Certificate, and that is really one of the great pieces that we're embedding into our Work Skills Program for general ed students. The Branding and Marketing Pathway, and also to set up our middle school maker spaces. So part of that, it was the work to create those and the work done with it. They also support our Burns Bill Family Fest. So these are some of the partnerships that we've been able to put in place with the Greater Twin Cities. As part of that grant, they expected us to be making progress toward the delivery of the Associate of Arts degree, making sure that our students could earn an AA degree at some point down the road, and that we were doing that exploratory and foundational work to put that in place. There are many other schools in the metro area who offer this opportunity, and it's very much, it's very much in comparison to an international baccalaureate school, where there are students who would choose to take all of the things necessary to earn their AA degree, or their international baccalaureate diploma, or there are students like Dr. Battle's child who chose only to take certain ones and not earn the full diploma, but they got the advantage of taking as many of those that were available and of interest to them. The same holds true for the Associate of Arts. When I look at comparable school districts, they usually end up, even big districts like ours, usually end up with fewer than a half a dozen students who earn that Associate of Arts degree, simply because it is incredibly rigorous, and they are meeting all of their high school requirements and those two years of requirements of college courses. So it tends to be very rigorous. However, the benefit for the students who have those courses available to them, while they may not earn the degree as they graduate from high school, they have made tremendous progress through one full semester or even one full year of college credits at no cost. So that really makes a big difference for them. So we have been doing the groundwork. We have been doing the exploratories, looking at what our teacher credentialing options are available, thinking about how do we create those foundations for ninth and 10th graders so that they are prepared, similar to programs that might be remedial at the first year for students at those community colleges. But for us, they become just part of their foundational work as ninth and 10th graders.
So this would potentially help students address the prerequisites if they don't get the Associate?
Yes.
Yep, okay.
So when we take a look at all the planning and foundational work that's been being done, this is where we are in terms of credits that are available to our students right now. So the Minnesota Transfer Credits, students need 40 of those credits. We have 29 credits available, but they don't all meet the requirements for the 40. So we still have to place another 20 credits into our courses. In the elective courses, they need 18, and we have 16 of those courses, credit courses already available, so we would only need two more. And Health and FIAED, they only need two of the credits, and we haven't moved forward with that particular program yet, but that is one of the other pieces. So we really are looking at our College in the Schools and our concurrent enrollment courses that already exist at the, at BHS, and are very, very close to being able to offer the full Associate of Arts degree.
So with the Health and FIAED, would that address both the requirement that we have at the high school level?
Yes.
Okay.
The idea is, is that it is rigorous enough to meet our high school requirements at the same time of being able to meet the requirements at the community college.
So where we can, we're trying to keep students from having to duplicate.
Absolutely. That is, that is what we want to make sure is happening here. Now, to remember that if we, if-
So?
Did you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, so our pathways programs, by design, you know, are fairly channeled into certain disciplines. We've always said you can jump around or move around it and whatever. They're not siloed, but, and I'm assuming a fair amount of the pathway stuff is covering this, right?
Many of them.
So my question would be is if you went to achieve this, because it's not like there's 100 credits, and you're trying to find 40 inside of 100, it's pretty, pretty much, there's a path, right? You'd have to do exactly this path. Do you come out of it with like a little taste of nursing and a little taste of culinary and a little taste of auto, I mean, my question is, are you jumping all over the pathways program to get to the, through this roadmap here?
No. Many of the foundational courses are focused on those general requirements, and so it depends on really looking at, can we count this pathway? If I'm going through the nursing pathway, I still need to do the science, I still need to do the math, I still need to do the communications and the writing and those particular pieces. So the courses in that pathway, that's why we have 29, because we have some classes that, more than one class, that would meet that require, one of the 40 requirements.
Okay.
And so we don't want to distract students from their pathway-
That's what I was concerned about.
-in the way to move forward. But that's where that 29 comes in. We've got nine extra credits that might be duplicating, meeting requirements that students might take in different pathways.
Okay.
It would be interesting, I know you don't have it now, but if you could share it back, if we know how many of our students take those remedial, have taken those remedial classes after graduation, to know who, you know, who we're, realistically, who we will be serving.
Yep.
We have that information currently. It's through the Minnesota Department of Education SLEDs system, S-L-E-D-S, which is the statewide longitudinal data system. And so we have information from private state colleges and national colleges for all of our graduates. It's the clearinghouse.
National clearinghouse.
National clearinghouse. So Minnesota Department of Ed already has compiled all that information, so we'll make sure at another upcoming maybe spa-
That'd be interesting, yeah.
-we'll share that information with you.
I also just want to make a plug for high school students and the Math and Reading MCA. Math and, the Math and Reading MCA, if the Minskew has set a score, if students reach that score on that MCA, they are exempt from remedial courses at any Minskew school.
Just like to highlight another benefit to all of the programs we offer. Typically, seniors, if they stay on track for graduation each year, ninth, 10th, and 11th grade, they may only have two credits in senior year to finish their high school requirements. And so the benefit with these programs, they really can get a step up in their post-secondary plans. For example, my daughter did not take the full IB. She did not pursue the Associate of Arts degrees, but she, at the end of her senior year, had 18 college credits.
My son had a whole year. He started college as a sophomore.
Yes.
When I started as a junior and when I started as a senior.
And when we look at that as an equity path, I think it's really important that families know that that's available for their child, and really thinking about if their child is looking at being college-bound, if that's, you know, part of the pathway that they have, to really know that these are available to them.
I have a question about the slide, if I may.
Sure.
So at the bottom, it says, based on the number of CIS and concurrent courses already offered at BHS, does that mean AP classes cannot be counted as, towards this?
That's correct. AP courses earn credit based on the test, and then each individual college decides what credit they're going to give to them, so they don't earn the credit with the class.
So my follow-up question.
Mm-hmm.
A year ago, we made the decision to remove the CIS option from our courses that offered AP and CIS. Would we have been closer to this 20 needed credits before that than we are now?
Yes.
Thank you.
And looking backward, I'm sure there are going to be conversations about how to help get this information to our middle school families, right? As part of the pathways.
I'm not sure if it will be covered in partnerships, but our Business Education Network, they, Jennifer Harmoni, The Chamber, as well as Kathy Funston, our Director of Pathways and Partnerships, are planning a parent college and career fair. And so it is, we're talking about having middle school students as well as high school students, because we know that we need to plant that seed earlier, especially with our parents.
And I think that's one of the really great pieces, as we're thinking about middle schools and the pathways, having a K8 pathway school, how much more connection we can have with our high school pathways program, with our seventh and eighth graders especially, and their families to kind of see what lies ahead. So when we talk about partnerships, Kathy Funston really wanted me to share about the Business Education Network, and the fact that, that the work that they were doing really does support so many of the different programs and the opportunities in our community for those students to connect with business owners and folks in the industry, including those externships, and the opportunity that students will have to work within them. And so that has been a really fantastic opportunity, and they really are looking at, how do we reach more students and families and share the information about the opportunities that are available? Because many times, it has to do with families not being aware about how early they need to start working and planning. You know, they may be just taking their classes as ninth graders instead of really having those conversations as eighth graders. So, so that's, that's one of the great partnerships as we continue to work toward parent education and parent information as well. When we take a look at the future for high school pathways, we look at some of the work that we did last year. We put in the additional work with the education pathway. We added the app development and the web design, kind of looking forward to things that students, and it's also a response to some of the coding work that we're already doing in elementary and middle school, that students were getting to the high school with many of those skills, and were able to start working on web design and app development. We did put in the new, put in the EMT program, along with our First Responders program, and looking at the third level for our Culinary Arts Chef program. So those were pieces we did last year, and I know Kathy had shared that with you earlier this year. This year, we have been really focused on developing our work-based learning and internship program. We have work-based learning for our students at the best, for our transition students, but we wanted to pull that back and make sure that that was part of an overlay that we were doing as well in our, in our high school and at BOSS, so that those were things that would be available to them as well. So they're earning credit while they're working.
That's really great to hear, because I know when, when the pathways were first launched, or, you know, talking with our business, business people in the community, that's where they wanted us to be, and there was, there was a lot of pent-up energy around that and hoping that we would get there, so that's great.
Yeah. So, so that's been part of the development for this year. For next year, they're looking at a couple of new pieces to add into the pathways. We are looking at advanced manufacturing, which would be the third level that we are providing for students there, really looking at offering that as a concurrent course, so students could earn a credit with that course as well, combining that with the work-based learning, so the students could have a paid internship while they, and working and earning credits at the same time, and earning their industry certificate through their internship. So there's a lot of great pieces. We know that there are manufacturing businesses out there who are begging for students who have those skills and want to enter that industry. They're waiting for them at the door. And so this is a way that they can build that partnership with them and, and kind of ensure them in their own workplace.
And they're here in our community.
Yes, they are. As we go to the next level, we see cybersecurity as one of our pathways in the industrial technology, also adding, along with our first responder and our emergency EMT program, taking that out one step further into our criminal justice and law enforcement pathway and adding those particular pieces in. And then, of course, continuing to plan for our Associate's degree. We really want to emphasize the fact that if we put into place the opportunity with all of the things that are available to earn the Associate's degree, that begins with a ninth grade class. Courses are still available for everyone, but earning the degree requires students to be engaged in those all the way through the ninth grade, from ninth grade on, and that includes some of the foundational courses that they would take. And with that-
Thank you. Any other questions that weren't asked along the way?
Oh, yeah, well, I'm sure there's going to be plenty, but can we just flip back the slide? I have a question about the future here. You know, we focused significantly on, I don't know how you phrase it, but, you know, we have a culinary program, nursing, teaching, manufacturing, the public service realm. I know we have some pathways in marketing, accounting, if I'm not correct, business-related fields. I haven't seen an expansion of that. Has there been thoughts of other opportunities there? I believe if you look at like, say, Carlson School Management, the only additional master's programs they've offered was one around analytics, I don't know, but, and IT, for instance. I don't know, but, and IT, for instance, you know. So, I'm using that as a model, saying that's what the business world is looking for, is talents in those areas, so.
I know that what we currently offer as part of our business education, because that's not a new field for us, they've been able to work within those courses, entrepreneurship, accounting, as well as business plan, creating business plan, you know, all of those particular pieces, so that students have those, as well as the economics courses. And so, really making sure that we're providing students with the microeconomics, macroeconomics courses available to them. And those tend to be ones that students are accessing through PSEO.
Sort of, it's a follow-up to Eric's question, and so, are those, are all of our pathways students involved in work-based learning internships options? Or are those kind of limited to more, to certain pathways?
There are opportunities in every pathway, just, they may not, in each of the four pathways, there are opportunities, just not for every single career pathway.
Okay.
So, and I think that's part of what they're looking at with the work-based learning, is are there more opportunities for that to occur? So, I think we are kind of slow with some of these other pieces, such as the app development. We haven't quite connected all of those folks yet, but that is part of what they're looking at for the work-based learning pieces, is to see how many more of those opportunities we can have for students. And businesses and industries are looking for opportunities to work with students.
When did we graduate our first pathway, you know, first student that at least took a year's worth of pathways, or two years? How long has it been since we graduated the first one?
Fifteen, so this is twenty.
Yeah, I think this is.
It's gonna be this year, because I think it started my son's senior year.
Yep, this is, this is the fourth year.
That's all the way through. We've graduated a few years of kids that took at least one or two years of pathways programming.
But this is the year of kids who've been through it since ninth grade.
And I think also the director who mentioned, this is the first graduating class for Avid that began in middle school also.
Yeah, I did say that.
Is that correct?
Couple of weeks ago.
So, I just was, you know, I think it'd be beneficial down the road, you know, for us to maintain some ties on those people, because they're, you know, it would be, it'd be great to have success stories come back and interface with the classes and stuff, talk about how they've launched their career in nursing or culinary, or whatever it might be.
Absolutely, absolutely. And students listen to students.
Yep, especially if they come in and show them pictures of the fancy restaurant they're working in in New York City or something like that, so.
Anything else? Thank you very much, Amina.
I'm sorry, I thought you were gonna, I thought you were gonna ask a bunch of questions about colleges. I do have a thought. This isn't really a question. As we were tailing, we just had this conversation about this building and such, and I'm still, still kind of thinking about this. I wonder aloud how we, we have a big space here, and, you know, maybe it's an opportunity for something more than we thought about, outside the box a little bit, you know, a larger nursing lab, or a restaurant for our kids to work in and serve the community out of them, you know, turn, turn money and whatever experience. You know, some automotive, more automotive space. I know we have a decent space over at the high school, but something more. The, the model of having high schoolers here doing schoolwork failed, but that's because we tried to teach classic, senior-level high school here at this school. Maybe we could be teaching something more creative and outside the box here and.
You're still trying to find a place for lunch, aren't you?
What's that?
You're still trying to find a place for lunch, aren't you?
So, I am, huh? Right, I am. I want to be able to walk in the back door, you know, and through the kitchen and get my table. All right, that's enough.
That's it. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, and next, we're turning to a discussion around FY21 budget adjustments with Dr. Battle and Lisa Ryder.
As Lisa's moving toward the table and she'll wipe the computer, desktop, before Executive Director Ryder begins presenting information about the fiscal year 21 budget, I want to share with you once again, a little bit about how we are approaching the budget this year and how it's coming together. I want to remind everyone here and everyone watching that the budget is one part of our Integrated Action Plan. We've already received support from our community in the form of an increased levy. Another part of our Integrated Action Plan that we've already taken some action on is realigning our facilities, as well as rightsizing based on enrollment, seeking efficiencies and leveraging every funding source to programs and services. You've heard some of our work is to continue to improve and innovate when it comes to what we offer students. Tonight, you heard the final piece of the K-12 pathways. And so, when it comes to this budget process, what's most important is that we are taking a strategic priorities-driven approach. The initial thoughts about the budget were reflected in the presentation given to you on March 12th, and tonight, we will share updated information based on board direction given to us that evening. This direction included to increase projected enrollment by 100 students to 7,606, use the interactive model to put in adjustments previously requested in those for tonight that may arise from your conversation, provide more detail about reductions, provide a budget scenario for adding one, 1.5, and two to class size, identify additional efficiencies with some of our contracts. Lastly, I do want to emphasize that we do not sugarcoat the impact of staff reductions, especially during this time of change and uncertainty. We will be losing beloved colleagues, our children will be losing beloved staff, and we will be losing talent and expertise of newly hired staff. In the midst of this loss and during this time of uncertainty, I am and believe we can be hopeful as we look to the future. I believe families will stay with us. I have faith in our teachers and staff that we will deliver what our families need, which is an optimistic future for their children, a pathway on which they can find their voice, their passion, and their purpose. To finish this budget by June, my team and I need the best thinking of our school staff, students, parents, and the community. I believe better decisions will be made by us when those most impacted by our decisions give us their perspectives, questions, and ideals. There's an opportunity for those constituents to share their comments through an online forum. Due to COVID-19 guidance from the Minnesota Department of Health, we will not hold any community budget meetings at this time and for the foreseeable future. I do encourage everyone to submit your responses to the two questions on our online forum. So far, we've received 12 responses. I have reviewed every one of those responses, and the commitment to our constituents is I will read every comment. Thank you. Now, turn it over to Lisa Ryder.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. As we look into this agenda for this evening's discussion over budget, we're gonna talk about where things stand. We're gonna spend some time on the interactive model, so you can see how that's been developed further, as well as the next steps. So, as you asked, our initial steps are to begin using the 7,606 number, which is 100 students more than what we had been projecting previously. You can see what that does here is on the initial projected deficit, it's a change by $300,000. I'm sorry. Yep, that's right. And so, we start with an $8.5 million deficit, applying the voter-approved levy, the closing facilities amount, the rightsizing based on enrollment in our previous adjustments that we had defined as of last March 13th workshop of $1.1 million, we were then down to $1.9 million. As we take a look at our interactive model, we're able to go ahead and click right into this here from the PowerPoint. And what you'll find is that it's very similar to what it looked like initially, previously with the columns shown here, and I am going to try and make this larger. Bear with me a moment. I'm gonna first open it with Google Sheets. And then, we're gonna make this a little larger for you. Better? Not gonna do this right now. All right. So, what we have then is, on our revenues, it is taking the flat amount that we received with levy and other line item budgets of the revenue, and I'm adding into it then AO6, which is this figure, which comes from the table below and was seen on the previous screen. So, if I'm using 7,606 for enrollment, then I'm gonna add in $70,496,314 for revenue. On the expenditures, I am taking the amount that we had basically on our detailed line item, object dimension, rolling forward with percentages, and to that, I am encompassing both AO8, which is the amount of dollars that we would need for additional staffing because of the additional 100 students, and AP8, which is linked to the other tab, which encompasses our new list of budget items. So, as we look at this list briefly here, I have a reference number off on the left-hand side. With each of these items that you see listed here, the item description is identified, the closure number that we had previously, those are the first 12 reference lines. Nope, 13, sorry, 13. Lines 14 and 15 are the rightsizing numbers that we had used before, and remember, that was rightsizing based on the 7505 number, or 7506, excuse me. You see a column here for FTEs, and you see a column for a Y or an N. The Y and the color coding of green indicates that which we, as a team, are recommending. The dollar amount is what you see previously conversed about with regard to salaries and benefits, assuming that applies, with an impact statement, if there was one from previous materials or developed by us on the right. So, as you go down this list, after we get past the rightsizing teacher's line 15, then we begin to get into the athletic and activities. And if you recall from last meeting, we had a number of $75,000, but this list actually is $130,000. So, there are line items added in here between these two categories, okay? So, that's changed and included here, with the assumption of yes on all these. As we get down past the activities, then we start getting into some of the other things that were on the previous list of, say, reducing ELS staffing by .5, special education position. Some of this was kind of grouped together, and you asked that we pull it apart. So, as you go down the list a little further, then we get into some of these things that, for instance, may not have been on the list previously, but returning copiers for the closed buildings is something that we feel we can, we know we can do. But I will point out that the last two items that are green here are adds, not reductions to the budget, okay? And so, these two items, one of which is for funding a mental health contract. And I believe we discussed this previously, and the possibility of utilizing our Safe Schools money from this year for that purpose. But it is an add to the budget, so we needed to list it.
And also, the communications and classroom teachers for advanced learning are adds as well.
This 400 here?
And the 100,000 above it.
Oh, thank you. We also have, though, I think added from previous was the reduction of 400 here because it had, it's a reuse of our title and how we can utilize some things that might have been on staff and instead, apply it to people, and that way, then fund some of what we're talking about below. So, that was also added. Let's see. And then, the last 200,000 line item was for the capital modifications. We already know there would be necessary as we just close our three schools and move the special education programming to other schools, most of which is related to either, I believe it's mostly restrooms and a little bit of soundproofing.
And that number was included in what we discussed on the 13th. We're just seeing that detail today.
Yes.
Okay.
They, so I'm struggling a little to recall exactly what was on the list that was 1.1, and then we had another list of other things that were possibilities, okay? So, so this, what I've done is I consolidated it all, and then I sorted it so that you saw everything that was kind of recommended and what we consider necessary above in the, in the green. And so, I apologize if things are moved around, but just know it's for the reason of just trying to make it simpler for you to understand what we recommend and that which then.
I find this format much easier to work with. Thank you.
Likewise, yeah.
So, then we have items listed here with an N, and all that means is that, at this point in time, my formula down here below, which is being linked to the previous slide, is only gonna pick up the Y's, the yes, okay? So, if I go ahead and I change one of these cells here to say, and please forgive me, I'm just gonna choose one here. If I make this a Y.
You're in, you're in view only.
I'm in view only.
It never work when you're sharing your screen.
Let me just see if this works for us. Well, that seems a bit silly. I own it. The number changes. Yep, yep. So, I'm going to switch over for our purposes to that interactive model, but that's the idea behind it, okay? And so, when we go back to this model, then that number can change as you make decisions, and I'll move to a model that I can access.
Quick question on that. I know that original set we had looked at, one of the large dollar amounts was around the classroom size, and you had already baked in a 1% or one unit change, one student change, and last time we met. That's an N now.
Which one? Sorry.
Down at the bottom, increase elementary class size by one.
Right.
That had been a part of where we were at last time. Now, it's an N, so I'm, are we at zero increase right now as the tool sits before we start monkeying with it?
The tool sits with an increase enough for the 100 extra kids based on our ratios that are current, without any increase to the ratios.
Because you remember, we had those three lines before for elementary, middle, and high, and they were all set at one, and we talked about bumping those up, you know, tenths of a whatever or whole numbers. But you're saying those would be, those would not be included, that we're not, in that concept, that we're not at any increase as we start the tool, right?
Correct.
And why elementary only?
Where do you see elementary?
Well, I only see increase elementary by one or 1.5 or two. What if I wanted to increase elementary and?
It's really both, isn't it? Or is it mostly?
It's across the board. All class sizes. Okay, all right.
Lisa, I have one question. Go back to the main slide with fiscal year revised adopted. So, you have variance revenue for 2021, 2 million point two.
2.2, yes.
And then, the next slide, so the beginning deficit is 8.3. Does that include the levy applied?
The levy is included here in the revenue.
So, the 8.3 on the, another slide does include the levy?
Yes.
So, see, there are two different numbers. That's what I'm asking about.
Yes.
So, can you explain that, please?
So, this, this slide went down only as far as that which was the $1.1 million of adjustments. My green, what you just saw on that list, now went down further. It included some of the other additional reductions that we believe we can easily do and maintain and recommend, and it includes some of the other adds that we know we also have to incorporate into the budget. Therefore, the 1.9 number now looks like 2.2 with everything that's green. Therefore, the one point nine number now looks like two point two with everything that's green. So I have shifted that line. I've moved it down further to include some things to begin with. We can go back up and put no's on some of those and then see that number change back up to this one point nine. That's fine. But just that's that's kind of the concept. The intent is that with this model, you can tell me yes or no on any one thing and we can adjust those numbers very quickly.
I would actually take, would like to take it just one more step on that yes no's tab. And because there are things on there that are related to the school closures. And the, well, definitively the school closures, we could debate the right sizing conversations or whatever. But the school closures really, I mean, that's, it's kind of like a lock, right? I mean, that's those, that's coming out of the budget.
That decision was made.
Yeah, so I mean, I'm saying some of the green, really, we can't play around with, right? And some of the green we could if we wanted to. Could we do shades of green or something like that to kind of understand some of those?
Like, blue's been decided. And then like, green is-
Does that make sense?
Recommended. And then another one is like wiggle room.
Let me get to adding my account here. Hold on just a moment, please, and then I'll.
And I, you know, obviously you could do that at another time. You don't have to do that now, obviously, but I'm just-
I know that, oh no, Stephanie is here. What is the rationale for the cuts in special ed teachers in the classroom?
I was hoping to be the one to ask that.
Sorry, I'm the special ed mom.
I was going to channel Leslie for a minute.
Like just gleamed in my face. It's like ping ping ping.
I was hoping I don't get my Jeopardy buzzer going.
And Stephanie, I think it's fair to expand it both to the EL and the sped. I like, what's your comfort level with those? What's the reason behind it?
You're asking about the reductions there.
Eight and a half people.
Yeah, it was a lot of people in the classroom.
What they are positions that we can do just because we're consolidating. So we're more efficient. And we believe that like the last few years, our cuts come just from some natural transitions and retirements and those kinds of things. But it's, we're lucky enough to be able to kind of just be more efficient, be part of that.
Yeah, my only concern is making sure that we're fulfilling and meeting the needs of the students in special ed.
Yep, absolutely.
What the teachers are.
Yeah, yep, absolutely. Yep, and we've kept true to our case load size that we have right now.
So that would be an example of what I was speaking about because those are one, those are essentially one time. They're ongoing value, but one-time cuts because of the unique circumstances we're in for closing buildings. It's not like we're scaling back our special ed programming. We are making cuts because we've gone from three middle schools to two middle schools and ten elementaries to eight elementaries. And maybe also because we've had a decreased student count in conjunction with that.
It's just allowed us to be more efficient in places. Yeah, yep. But it's not like because of the, you know, we saw the students. We saw our numbers are still there for special education. And so we still have to serve those students.
Will some of that be balanced with EAs then to add added support?
Yeah, at this time, we have not proposed any reduction in EAs because we still have a pretty constant group of kiddos. So we we feel like we know their needs and we have some consistent data over the last few years to show where our focus programs are in need. And so we've got a good ratio going there and so we've kept those levels the same. You know, our, one of our major goals has been to increase the inclusion for all of our students receiving special ed services and our parent professionals or EAs are a huge part of the success of that.
Yes, they are.
And the EL piece at line thirty-three?
That would be my friend Amina, the EL staff.
Repeat the question.
Same question. The level-
Yeah, it's only a point five, yep.
Okay, so I have adjusted to include secondary on the description down below with regard to the one, one point five and two point O. I heard that there was some conversation around changing color coding to indicate, and help me out because I was a little distracted, so I didn't catch everything.
Just indicating, like for example, the conversation around, well, definitively, if I'm looking, you know, as an, indicating things that are part of the school closures and or other efficiencies or I guess I would expand it personally to also right sizing, you know, kind of conversation. So for instance, you know, losing a principal or, you know, the, I know there's something on here specific to Met, there's a couple of things that are very called out specific to Metcalf. Well, those are not things we're going to play around with yes or no's on. I mean, those, that's part of the-
Oh, that's a little bit, right, but, sorry.
Good enough for now.
Yeah, that's, I mean-
But so what I'm hearing you say is to really identify these items, for instance, that the decision's been made.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that would be good.
But I mean, even to Leslie's questions, I mean, those, it's important to understand that we are going to, the intention, at least my understanding is with these cuts, we will continue, be able to continue to serve the special education needs with the same rigor that we've been doing so before. But we're also making some cuts because of efficiencies that have occurred because of school closures and increasing students.
I wouldn't put the special ed cuts in the same bucket as the Metcalf cuts though, because I think it's still fair to have a conversation about, is that the right amount for the special ed, whereas Metcalf, we're not going to have a yearbook at Metcalf, so we don't need that stipend.
Right. Thank you for that. I I think that, you know, if we would have a, say, a group home pop up in our community and have, you know, four kiddos that had some significant need for support, we would have to respond to that. And so we continue to watch our numbers and pay attention to the needs of our students. And, you know, and kind of roll with that.
Scott, I'm going to, just on a philosophical conversation point, I'm going to challenge what you said a little bit in that we would, that we would have a conversation about whether we're, I think the way you phrased it, providing the right amount of special education students. Believe, I believe that our role is to instruct this, Dr. Battle's staff that we believe in a certain level of student support for our students.
Oh, I agree. I just think it's worth having the conversation on. Is this, are we still going to have the right amount to be able to offer those?
I just don't want to get in a slippery slope where we're talking about one point five versus two FTEs. That's their choice to make. You know, where that falls, we just want to express to them, we're not willing to make any cuts in this area, or we are willing to make cuts in this area, you know.
Stephanie, do you want to talk a little bit about maintenance of effort and IEPs?
Yeah, I sure can. And believe me, I wouldn't be coming if with those numbers if we couldn't do it, right? Like, we really pay attention to every single student and the needs that are currently on there. We have student systems that allow us to pull data in real ways and real time to keep us on top of those things. And maintenance of effort is something that we have to pay attention to. As we all know, we have to show that we are maintaining our effort towards the support of those special ed students. And because our numbers don't go down in special education, we are charged to do that. Now, why they're not going down isn't necessarily the students that are attending here. They count all of our students. And so those are our open enrolled students as well that they consider in that bunch. Our student support teams and principals and teachers are doing a great job of supporting students and not over identifying. And, you know, we're not on any lists that indicate that we're, you know, having any categories that show inequities. So we're, I think our teams are doing a great job in all of that. But we continue to do what we can to support and become as efficient as we as we can. And we truly believe that the best place for all students is getting that good instruction, the general classroom, and continuing to support that as best we can.
Thank you.
I would have to say though, that for open and families that open enroll into our district because of special ed has, says a lot about our special ed programming, that they're not getting in their other schools.
It's true.
So I've started to incorporate what you defined. I guess I'd need to work with my, the rest of our team to determine exactly what else they would consider to be that blue versus the green. However,
I'd say that anything that says Metcalf on it is probably part of the blue, right?
Well, like I said, I, not something you need to do right here.
Right, right.
You don't need to do it now.
That's the idea.
Keep the, keep the conversation going.
Finish explaining, you were almost to the end of the list, I believe.
Right, so at the end of the list here then, with these that are white in color for forty-seven on down through fifty-four, these were items that were brought on from previous, the previous year's list, as well as one item that was brought up just amongst our team, excuse me, our conversation in this past month. So we have our walk distance to increase by a half mile. And this is an old number, but our transportation department did indicate that would be true if this were at the secondary level. Remember, if we do it only at elementary, that doesn't change our secondary routing, so it doesn't really save us dollars. Okay, activity fee increased by twenty-five percent less the credit card fees. So this is where I'm, I am netting the two numbers of what we could generate potentially from revenue, offset by what the fee would be for us to take that back. Because we do believe that we may have experienced quite a bit of people choosing to do checks or cash versus the credit card, just because they had that fee thing showing up, you know. So if we incorporate that into our higher fees and we absorb that, we believe it might make a difference. Part of our concern and issue may also have stemmed partly this last spring here from our fee pay issues. And so just know that that system will be replaced to come, come July.
What you're saying is the increase, but the credit card fees would go away?
We would be absorbing them, so the families would not see it.
As a family, as a parent, you would say, oh, there's no credit card fees anymore.
Right, but we'd be absorbing it.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay, so then we have the restoring CIS at Princeville High School. And we have eliminating orchestra at the middle schools, all of which, all of these so far have come from previous year's list. It was mentioned to add to this, then the elimination of the Princeville High School orchestra. So it's been added. The next lines are from previous year, eliminating the ninth grade athletic teams from the athletic budget. And I didn't put in the number of stipends because I just didn't know how many that would be. Eliminating the patrol stipend at each of our elementary schools is where that would land. And then the concept of reducing fifty percent each media EA would then have two buildings that they would work for. So they would serve two buildings versus just, just one.
And understanding that that obviously presents a decrease in contact with our students and different services that the media EAs provide. Can you give a better picture of what that might mean for our elementary students?
For the media piece?
Yeah.
Well, you might need to help me out here, Stacy, because I think under our, our changed allowance for each of the different schools, maybe our ratios have shifted some with the closure of two elementary schools potentially. But last year when we spoke about this, I think there were six hour EAs. And we were talking about this going, their hours would be now split between two buildings. And that would be essentially how that would look. So you'd have fewer EAs.
Right, I understand that. But on a functional day-to-day basis, what does that look like? What would that, like, how would, how would an elementary student experience in the media center change?
So that, that would reduce by half the coverage of the media center. And so the students would have to, teachers would have to build that into their classroom time to take students to the media center to check out books. And then the only tasks probably that the, that would, the media EA would do would be shelving and returns. The teachers, essentially, the teachers would have to learn how to check out the books on their own.
And so the time in the media center is not already built into class time?
They do, they do. But the media EAs provide, you know, selections of books. They also then allow the teacher to be able to work with students while they're selecting books or, you know, those types of things so that the EA can check out books.
They really do.
The media EA also serves as kind of a first line of support too for some of the technology needs that, that students have. So it would, it would limit the access and kind of robustness of the students' experience in the media center.
And, and obviously, they're still a very central part to the, the day of our elementary students.
Thus, that's why we have a no. We're not recommending the ends until further discussion here with the board.
The last three here, I am going to, we listed them. They are in a different color for the reason that you cannot choose all three. It's not the intent here. These dollar amounts.
I guess.
These dollar amounts are indicated as if, so if you were to increase sizes by one, you'd see a nine hundred thousand dollar savings, for example, across the board. If we move it to one and a half, that's nine hundred plus, it's not nine hundred plus the one point three, it's one point three.
Right.
Okay, and so it's one or the other is intended to be selected of those last three lines. And then there should not be any duplications in the lines above that, but these, these would be considered duplicated if you were to choose one, more than one.
And Stacy Silvan will explain a little bit more. We're going to pass around another sheet that explains the impact of increased class size by one, the one point five and the two point.
Before that, just so that I wrap my, my brain around everything. So in the previous thing, the previous-
This over here.
That one.
This number-
The, all the yeses have already been accounted into the fact that we still have another two point two to eliminate. So out of the no's, we don't have other options beyond that being presented to us yet.
Correct.
Okay, so I'm just trying to wrap my brain around where we have to make some of those possibly a yes.
Well, and I think also, I know, I appreciated Jen's comment in the workshop, looking at the unassigned fund balance percent, just as a context for where we have been in the past.
So a year ago, when the board adopted the budget in June for the current year, it was adopted at a six point two when projected unassigned fund balance. Our actual results from the audit, as you can see, ended at a five point eight six percent. A large part of this is a numbers thing, I want to point out. When you did, when we had the audit completed, we have a larger number here for restricted. So had I had a little more time to recode some things that were maybe eligible under last year's restricted ALC funding that we received, after knowing exactly how much we received, I think we could have, we could have brought that number down. And then that increases the unassigned number, which then increases your percent down here. Okay, so just know that as you look at this and you, and it is, is important to note, I have made assumptions here that we will be working to spend that number down, right? So you can see that we're working at the revised budget time. We're anticipating to spend that down here as we get to the end of this year. And as we look at then projecting into the future, the next year, we'd want to spend it down again, yet again. Okay, and not see it to grow. So we're going to really hyper-focus on that spending of restricted funds before we spend our general.
And that also goes to the A and I conversation, right? Yep, okay.
Okay.
Ready for Stacy to explain class size?
Okay. The handout that you have here has-
the handout that you have here has three different sections. The top left section kind of gives you an overall picture. The middle section is looking at elementary and the bottom is looking specifically at secondary. Our top left corner, that box there, is based upon, um, oh, I keep putting fifty-two oh six. It's, um, seventy seventy-six oh six is the number that we're working with. I'm not sure why I have the fifty-two oh six there. But no changes to the class size. Um, still, it's a reduction of FTEs for teachers of forty-nine point one. Your students per teacher. This is close to what is reported on the state website. Um, this is looking at all of your licensed teachers in comparison to your enrollment. We're looking at six hundred and eight point nine FTEs. What I'm look, the next row column here is what the salary and benefits for those teachers would be as far as a part of your budget. The numbers that I use for this piece is, right now, we're pretty much at a hundred thousand dollars for our average salary and benefit package for our teachers. Now, you'll hear us also use a number of seventy thousand dollars per reduction. Because when we're reducing staff, we're reducing those who are the least senior. So their average is closer to seventy thousand. When I look at all teachers as a whole, it falls more in towards around a hundred thousand. Okay, so that's why you'll hear a couple of different numbers in that sense. Again, Lisa and I sometimes walk different paths to get to roughly the same place. An increase of one overall is, uh, de- reducing your teaching force by fifty-eight point one FTEs, increasing by one point five. It's a reduction of sixty-two point one and an increase by two is sixty-five point five. And you can kind of see how that impacts our total, uh, students per teacher ratio through that. You're not gonna see much of an increase between one and a half and two, especially at the elementary level. It gets to a point where I can't do much and keep it. I I just can't adjust at that to that level. That's why that number stays to the same. I don't have enough sections. I I can't go below two teachers per grade level. I start running into inefficiencies when I try to raise it to that degree. Okay? So no increase. Um, this gives you an idea of what our numbers look like. I would have a hundred and forty-one FTEs. That's still a reduction in our elementary workforce of twelve and a half FTEs. Okay? Just for closing buildings, rightsizing, that type of of thing. If I were to increase the class size by one, and when I say the class size, again, I am looking at the total number. Our target number for elementary for K five is twenty-four point five FTEs, our our students per FTE, class size. Okay? Across all grades. So if I'm increasing by one, I'm expecting to be at twenty-five point five. And that's the number that you see in the bottom right in the middle table.
Hey, Stacy.
Yeah.
These numbers, um, are based on, um, a a new norm of eight elementaries. Is that correct?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
This is all, this is all based on what next year would look like.
Okay, good. Thank you.
So, you know, if I tried to increase my class sizes to get up to a twenty-five point five ratio, you see that I'm reducing roughly another five and a half, six and a half, or six teachers there. Um, you see what your average class size would look like per grade. And again, these are, these are within my my, uh, minimum and maximum class sizes. So I haven't gone over anything, quite frankly, than what we have right now. The real difference between no increase and increase by one, to start dialing in at the mi- or at the elementary, I have to use point fives for grade levels.
And none of these three use point fives?
Oh, they do. The increase by one and the increase by one and a half. I, it's the only way that I can get those buildings to increase. So no increase are whole FTEs per grade level.
Which means then that we would find ourselves in a similar situation next year that we have right now where we have, we have teachers kind of juggling classes.
The point five, right. Point fives, the buildings would either, they have a number of options. They can supplement with their compensatory. They can supplement with their Title One.
Right.
They can have a one point O teacher that is split between two grades. Or they could use that point five at that grade level for flexible, um, block scheduling. So they kind of use that person not as a a straight-up, um, uh, home room teacher.
Yep.
But they use it more for lowering class sizes for your 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 core areas.
So I have to ask this, and I'm sorry. Knowing that and knowing that we're talking about adding, um, enrichment specialists and knowing our past but past with how those enrichment specialists have been used and oftentimes point five enrichment versus point five another role.
We're protecting the the, uh, advanced learning specialist. There'd be a one point O person dedicated towards that, but they would be split between two sites.
Just wondering if, uh, Director Oftedal could talk about the implication of split classrooms?
So when you have a classroom that has, you know, uh, with the point five into it, um, there's a lot of different ways that, uh, principals use that. But in essence, it means that we're trying to reduce, uh, the class size for students, um, during the literacy block. And so that that point five person kind of pushes in. And so while they might have, um, you know, the classroom might have, you know, thirty students in it for like morning meeting and those types of things. The point five then would join that and they would be able to divide the kids, uh, in a different way for the literacy block. So that the instruction during the literacy block or during the math block would be fewer students to teacher to students. But that teacher wouldn't be full-time. And so a lot of the responsibilities of the other areas would um, would be during that higher class size. That's one of, that's one of the models.
Would that also be mitigated by the win time?
Um, win time would be one of the, you know, one of those ways. We're already breaking students up into small groups. And so that would
That would help a little bit.
It would help a little bit.
Depending on how the school has it structured.
But, um, if we had, uh, if it was a full-time person, you would be able to, uh, serve groups, uh, students in even smaller sizes.
Sure.
Small group sizes for intervention.
Thank you.
So that's elementary.
That's elementary.
Secondary.
So, um, if you're talking about secondary, you're talking about teachers who, um, would, uh, teach, uh, kind of those NCAP. I call them NCAP sections. So if I have, um, you know, three or four sections of seventh grade and they're three sections and they're working as teams in those three sections, one of those sections would be, would have split teachers. And so, um, part of the teacher, the teacher might only teach two sections of seventh grade, two sections of eighth grade and one section of sixth grade. And so you you have that kind of spread there. And when you have those small amounts, it's difficult to do any, do it any other way.
And that's why that's a no.
Oh, hang, hang, hang on here. I just want to make sure I heard the question correctly. At our secondary level, we have a lot of part-time FTEs. So I mean, that's, that's not the same kind of a scenario as what we have at elementary.
Yeah.
I mean, because the the building will get an allocation for the total FTEs based upon their total population. But then based upon registration or the types of courses that they need for each grade level, they'll determine, they'll say, you know what? I need to have sixteen classes of math. Well, that may only be, well, that's three point two FTEs for them to be able to pull that off.
Thank you for that because the reason we said no for the eliminate orchestra is because it's based on student demand. So if students want orchestra, we should not eliminate. That should be a building-level decision based on registrations.
And i- if this, if the, you eliminate one of the, uh, elective choices like orchestra, those students still have to go somewhere. So you don't eliminate the staffing need for it. You just put it in a different place.
Then for the secondary, it's it's broken out a little bit differently. I'm giving you three different, uh, lenses on this. So when I'm looking at no increase, our current formula for generating the the general allocation for buildings, the high school is at thirty-eight students and both of the middle schools is at thirty-six. So what the formula does, it takes the total amount of students and it says, all right, how many just general ed classroom teachers do I need to handle that building's population? It doesn't take into account the number of students that are pulled out or receiving services through special ed, EL, school within a school, the additional, uh, compensatory that goes to the school. And what was the other one that I was, I said, school within a school? Yep. Special education, ESL and compensatory for secondary. So all of those other sources of revenue are additional teachers that actually is decreasing your your your, the amount of students that are in all of the classes. So when I'm talking about increasing, um, by one, one and a half and two, I'm increasing on the formula for the general ed allocation. Okay? So that's what you can kind of see what those numbers would look like, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, thirty-nine and a half and forty. The second, um, table that is there, currently, this this goes back to the total number of teachers per, or total number of students per teacher. Okay, so I'm looking at every teacher that I have in that building and how many students that I have. So for the high school with no increase, it's sixteen and a half students per teacher, thirteen and a half students per teacher, thirteen point seven for the two middle schools. And then you can see what the increase looks like. The last table is your average class size. So here, I'm not looking at every teacher, but I am looking at every classroom teacher or teacher that's providing instruction. So I'm not including deans, counselors, social workers, nurses, anybody else in the building along that line. This is just the folks who provide instruction. And then when I do that, you can see our, what our average class sizes look like with no increase, adding one, one and a half and two across the board. Okay? Now, remember, you're gonna say, I'm aware that there's a social studies class that has forty kids in it. Okay? That is nowhere near my twenty-six point six. True. But I also have special ed classes that may vary between eight to ten kids, EL classes that may be sitting around ten kids. I also may have some college and school courses or AP courses that are lower numbers. So once you start seeing, you will have extremes. You just will. But the average across all of these different courses that are occurring during the day is the twenty-six point six at the high school.
And, um, you actually preempted my question. What is our, what is, what is our range at the high school? In cla- I mean
I don't know that number.
Don't.
And and the reason I don't know that number is because I don't set a a range. This goes back to the registration. I'm basing his, based upon his total enrollment, doing the general, uh, formula. And he receives, um, four teachers out of compensatory. He has then his EL population that's determined upon the needs, special ed determined upon the needs. That all kind of rolls in together. But then he takes that and he looks at his registrations.
Right.
And he has to make a determination on his trend line, pretty much in the same way that I look at enrollment. He's going to look at, okay, I'm going to set up a calculus kid, uh, class. So far, I have forty-five kids that are in there. I know within the first two weeks, probably gonna lose about ten. So I may go ahead and staff that a little bit higher. And knowing that he's gonna drop off because he's gonna have to have other classes prepared for those students then to go there.
And does he, this is getting into the weeds, but I feel like I have to ask it. But is is there some sort of cutoff that he uses for a particular type of class in terms of whether it makes sense to offer it or not?
Yeah, he has his own parameters. I'm just not aware of what the they are for that. I mean, science classes, he's only gonna be able to go so far with because of the labs, the amount of space.
Yep.
You know, it, there are sometimes just the physical limitations. Also within some, um, I believe college and the schools and AP also has some limitations built on what those sizes are. We have caseload sizes for some of our other courses for EL or special ed as well. There are some built-in restrictions. I'm gonna say softer courses, the social studies.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know.
Thank you.
I think it's a great example of forty forty kids in a social studies class. I know it was a hypothetical example. Who is not acceptable in our perspective at least. Um, but, um, it's also an example of how that's not something we can manage in the odd, the, um, us aspects of a budget conversation, right? We set the, and that's, I'm just stating that for the obvious and for those, and anyone that's listening at home. That's, that's how we, we have to start with these general numbers and and leave the the those conversations of the second conversation on another level, so.
And and also for the high school, numbers will be al- always will be higher in the fall for classes than what they will be in the spring. We always have a significant drop in our enrollment at the high school between semesters. Part of the reason is, is that first semester, you have some, using collegiate terms, like a fifth-year senior finishing up. You have folks that aren't going to need a full year. You have some students who are in the process at the high school that will transition over to the alternative high school, which is a better fit for their needs. So what may start off high, we have to kind of look at for the full year that the numbers will balance out as well.
And so Lisa, the two bottom numbers.
Yes.
Explain. Thank you. And then
You're meaning these these numbers right here?
Yes.
Can I ask one more question, though, about this thing? Um, what is our average class size numbers in comparison with our membering districts or like in like what would be more standard?
Sure.
Like, what would be like, are are we within the the parameters of, you know, I ideal classroom size or?
So if we look at the top table here in the top left-hand corner, where it talks about students per teacher with the twelve point five, twelve point seven, twelve point eight.
Mm-hmm.
I believe maybe at our last meeting, I handed out to where it it showed that we had twelve, thirteen and fourteen with different ways of breaking out the teachers, uh, students per teacher and our our neighboring districts would be at the fourteen, fifteen. Most of our neighboring districts were at least two students higher than us. The only one that was comparable was going to
Make sure, because it wasn't right in front of my face.
You're giving me those prior-like numbers, right?
Soonest the
Well, and Stacy, in terms of, um, teachers, we reduced, we cut about forty-four last go-round. And then in the fall, we hired back about
Well, we we released, we had a retirement incentive. We had resignations and we had leaves.
Yep. And that amounted to about forty-four.
Right.
And then in the fall, I know on the
No, 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 no. The forty-four is what we released because of either rightsizing or budget.
Got it.
The others added on top.
On top of that. So when we added folks back, it was because of additional attrition that was occurring underneath it.
Thank you.
Yep.
So I assume, though, the yes and no at the bottom are just the sums of all the N values and the Y values of
Yes, so in total, all of this, the list above that you have, but again, it's it's taking into consideration these each as a line. And so that's three point eight right there. But those that are yes are four point six mil and right now, those that are with an N are four point three five. So as we, as we shift these to Ys or Ns, as they they change, then these numbers will change. What's being picked up is the row that is that which says yes. And it's included in the FY twenty-one budget assumptions.
So to I'm sorry, I assume you're done with the
Well, every year we have this conversation around which number are you gonna focus on?
Yep, no.
Now, if you're, if you were truly wanting to balance the budget, then you'd be focusing on that row ten, which is variance revenues less expenditures, and you'd want that to be zero. Okay? If you are focusing on the unassigned fund balance percentage, then that's a different row and that's row twenty-one. Okay? And so every year we talk about that because that that does make a difference, right? Um, and I did clarify with our auditor because there is a, you see a list of of different fund balance categories here. One that's not listed here that is eligible under the GASB is assigned. Our board chose not to have the assigned category, which typically Our board chose not to have the assigned category, which typically means that's in the hands of the position like my own, and that I would make those decisions about what's assigned. And so that, that's still in your, your realm, but because it is, it's just like the committed, right? So we don't show an assigned. But one of the things that a, a board or a business manager could assign, if they have the authority, is to say, we're anticipating we're going to spend fund balance down by two point two mil. Well, then that means that my unassigned isn't really seven point eight, it's really five point six, right? And you'd have another row here that would be assigned for the amount that you're, because you're kind of setting them aside that fund balance because you know you're going to spend it down, kind of concept. Follow me? Now, last audit, at the last second, they tried to tell me I needed to set aside a million dollars because we had that nine oh seven in our adopted budget, and they said you should set that aside as, as assigned. You have that authority. I'm like, well, first of all, I don't, and secondly, no, no, no. We're not wanting to do that. So I clarified with them that that is just an option. It is not a requirement. And so just know that you have that option, but it's not a requirement.
Well, I think that's an excellent segue to what I was going to say, because you started this conversation briefly earlier. We, I mentioned this last week, and I want to bring it up again, that, you know, if we're looking at this from a perspective of the fund balance, as Abigail noted, we have not landed where we necessarily projected. We've actually risen a bit, and, and now as we look at where we are right now with a two point two in the balanced budget objective, we're still landing at a six point zero six percent on the fund balance. And where I, you know, again, as I mentioned last time, I, I think we need to keep in the back of our mind some thoughts around, this is not a natural year. It's not a normal year. We are going into the dark a little bit here.
Even more so now than a month ago.
Yeah, that's fair.
More or less.
But we closed three schools at minimum and, you know, I optimistically believe that for all the hard work that Lisa's team has done, there are pieces of what the, what's going to happen with closing three schools that are not necessarily valued into our future, potentially bigger benefits than we realize, coming out of efficiencies and such. So I throw out again, I, last, last time I said it, I throw out again for you to think a little bit about the idea that, that unassigned fund balance isn't completely sacrosanct, and we can bite into it a little bit, because if we start cutting programs differentiate us, those are something we can't back away from. So I just, I'm going to project that back out there again.
Thank you.
I'd like us to consider a combination of whether we dip into the fund balance and like, potentially increase class size by one, just because that adds a million dollars, it takes almost a million dollars off. I think also in looking at that too, and just hearing from when Amino was presenting, you know, do we add back into the budget, go back to the other one, the other slide?
The list of adjustments.
If we add in that, restore C I S at B H S, would that be a benefit for, to get more students to be participating and getting college credit? So then that is an advantage that we're demonstrating in the high school. I mean, because that's really only, you know, what, sixty-six thousand dollars? So if there was some sort of combo.
So with those two suggestions you just made, by making that change, then you can see the impact.
And then if, if for reason we wanted to bring that, that's unassigned fund balance down to like five percent, what would that look like?
To bring it down to five percent?
Yeah. So it's not six point seven four.
But isn't it six point seven four if we?
If we made those changes, so like, what if we brought our, you know, so like, we, we took off of the unassigned to bring our fund down, the percent down, so.
I'm not tracking, sorry.
The six point seven four includes the one point four million.
I just changed that now.
Yeah.
So you saw where this was two point two four, and now it's one point four one.
The only way to do what you're asking Leslie is you'd have to go find other already Ys and make them Ns on the, on the chart.
Yeah, so you would be taking less reductions to bring it down lower.
Spending down the fund balance by one point four million?
Right. Right.
To get to that six point whatever.
What, what is St. Paul's? I thought I read that as far as the, when they were going around with the teacher stuff. What's their fund balance at?
I.
I think it's in the fives, isn't it?
Don't know. I'm focused on one nine one.
Good answer.
But I mean, I, we've, we've, I know we've had a board policy for years, it's eight percent, and we were up at thirteen years ago, and we've come down. I just trying to put it a little in context is all I'm trying to do, because I believe, if I remember when I was reading that story about what was going on in St. Paul the last couple of weeks, there was some point, there was a conversation, there was a line in there about it being in the fives, I think.
Well, traditionally, as I started off with the goals, I had one of the goals to restore fund balance, so traditionally, it was not recommended to use fund balance. But we're in a very different tenuous financial situation, and what we've heard from our public as well as you, is we, where are we going to cut programs, to really focus on programs?
So just a question, Stacy, if we were to increase by one, we're talking about a loss of fifty-eight point one, right? Fifty-eight point one F T E. Okay.
An additional eleven.
An additional.
We're already at a forty-nine point one.
Right, right. Would you like to see if it turns to a yes, what happens?
That's like the math for you.
Okay, turn that to a yes, the one and.
Sorry, which one?
Turn the yes to, for adding one, and show what happens.
Increase by one, it is, but do you want this one to still remain? I had changed these when Leslie had suggested them earlier.
Yeah, and that's fine.
Yes, because for the second time tonight, she beat me to my question.
We think alike, God.
I'm not, I should have stayed home.
I think so, yeah.
And I would like to point out, the reason we have eliminate high school orchestra on there is my doing. I don't want to eliminate either one of them frankly, but I, I do argue that if we cut middle school orchestra, we, I don't understand the, what the point of keeping high school orchestra around. And that's why I asked for it to at least be valued on there and show what the, because by that point, you're asking a ninth grader to pick up a string, so.
And how many probationary teachers do we have? Is that getting too much in the, in the weeds?
It isn't, but we don't have many.
Gotcha. Thank you.
We don't have, I mean, we have less than ten at elementary.
That's surprising to me.
I mean, a number of years of reductions already.
Right. So the implication is you're going beyond the probationary.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Especially elementary.
Is that true of just even the forty-nine point one? Yes, okay.
Can we just repeat, so I, repeat the line forty-seven, row seventy-nine, the implications of that practically and what that, where we're at right now and what that means?
The walking distance?
Yeah.
We are at one mile for elementary and one and a half for secondary under our policy. The state is at one and a half and two, so we could move up to the state levels, but if we do not extend it at the secondary, you will see no change in your cost, because our cost and saving routes is going to be at the secondary route, not at the elementary. You, you could, you could implement at the secondary route an increase in walking distance and not the elementary, and I think you would still find a savings, but I'd need to verify Because we have enough of the routes that are freed up because we're not doing the magnet routes, that we would be able to go back out and, and pick up those that are within that extra.
And that savings, I mean, I would think that we're actually impacting less students because we have less buildings in the, in the district. So that savings still applies even though, I mean, naturally, there's students that have moved outside our walk distance simply because of our closing schools.
Yeah, it's, it's going to be your Niclet that's going to expand for walking distance, and then your Eagle Ridge, I'm not sure if we're already maxed out, I'd have to check those with them. You know, but I think there must be some room.
There's some boundary things too, right? You can't go over.
Yeah, we're going to run into hazard roads, absolutely.
You can't go over forty-two.
Niclet is quite extensive. I'm, I'm amazed when I look at the walking distance, how far north it goes, you know, towards thirteen. I mean, it goes all the way down to Burnsville.
We already this year have a lot of extra traffic at, at least at Niclet, because we've got the morning buses, going to go, everybody who wa, who takes the bus to the high school is now walking to the middle schools, so.
Fair enough.
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know, I almost feel like swapping the walking distance with the C I S makes the most sense for me. I mean, it's adding a program back and even, even acknowledging the, the traffic at the middle schools. Folks know that there's better opportunity at the high school, I don't know if that.
Take a walk for C I S.
Take a walk for C I S.
Or what about the activity fees? So it says we have not raised the fees in some time.
I, I, I'm very strong, I, yeah, I would like to see us probably increase the activities.
But that's not a given. Activity, I mean, you're assuming the same enrollment, the same participation.
You are making a few assumptions. This is simply taking the dollars generated in the nineteen audit.
Yep.
Times a percentage increase.
Yep.
And rolling that forward. So you are making the assumption that those that were able to pay before with an increase will continue to pay.
Does there's a sliding fee or?
There's no sliding fee, it's, it, there's a forgiveness if they are, it's waived.
Got it. Okay. I wanted to make sure.
And, and there's a, there's a small amount that's asked for, but if, if, for example, okay, we have families that can afford, you know, this much, and you got this much, it's a waiver, right? Well, then you increase these fees, you know, does this go up the exact same amount or is it that, you know, I can't, I can't go beyond this point, and so you actually have more of a gap? We may not see that much revenue.
Right.
Fair statement.
So that's an assumption.
It's an assumption.
You remember when you received persuasive letters from middle school students and based on issues that mattered to them? So it was nutrition, school lunches and breakfast, but also activities because we eliminated the middle school sports. And community education did offer a pilot of, I think, three sports. The feedback I heard from the students was they could, their parents could not afford the fees. So previously, it was twenty-five dollars for middle school sports. Community ed, because it's fee-based, it was a hundred and fifteen dollars. So that is a consideration. We're assuming that those who paid will still pay with the increase.
There's also an access issue. I mean, number one, I'm not necessarily comfortable banking on something that has that much unknown in it, in addition to the fact that we know that those who can will, and those who can't will just have to do without.
But I think we also must understand the reality of increased costs with athletics. So the Minnesota State High School League, they set the official salaries. So you may have that increase. Last board meeting in a workshop, we talked about the ice rink fees, so if they raise their fees, we absorb that cost. Also, every five years, you must replace your football helmets, and based on need for increased safety, the helmets change, and so the, there's increased cost. So there are built-in costs that we should also consider for athletic programming. At safety, we need to absorb the increase if we're going to offer the program.
I understand the instability and the ability to calculate this, but Lisa's usually pretty good at this, and if she's off by twenty percent, there's still a hundred thousand dollars there.
Or maybe not increase by twenty-five percent, maybe it's an increase of ten, just so that it's not so, feels hard on a, on a family.
That would be a much bigger change than the twenty percent error rate, but, I mean, yeah, but the thing about activities is typically that's the, that's the realm where you get, there are scholarships available, we have bear, we have thresholds where we make available ability, and then you have very passionate community members that are involved in these activities typically. If losing five or six students because they can't get, because the fee went up, I can guarantee you the, the parents that do want to participate will find a way to take care of that.
Well, and that's assuming they're going to come forward and say that they need the help.
I understand that.
I mean, there is pride involved.
I, I know, but we have to.
I just, I don't think fees are anything, it, it's, it's not in keeping with our values. If, if we want to offer something, we want to be able to offer it in a way that all of our kids can, can participate. And it's, you know, unfortunate enough that we have to charge the fees to begin with, but, you know, to increase them as part of a budget process under the assumption that we're going to get a hundred thousand dollars more from our families, I have a problem with that.
I think the only way that I don't have a problem with that is because there's added costs that keep increasing, so you have to almost keep with inflation. So it's something that we'd have to keep into consideration, so if we keep the cost flat for twenty years, we're not keeping up with the expense of replacing new equipment. So we're at a more financial loss than just the cost of inflation of increasing the fact that we have more costs involved.
It depends since we raised the fees.
That's what I was asking, because if it's been five or ten years, it's like, I think it's fine to raise the fees.
Do we know?
Honestly.
Do you know?
As long as I've been here, we have not raised fees.
Okay.
How long have you been here?
Is it, is it a universal thing, or is it?
Have been raised at least once.
Can fees be raised sporadically throughout?
Oh, yes. Say that again?
Is it a universal thing where fees have not been raised, or could maybe, you know, chess club and, and Quiz Bowl have not raised, but ma, football has raised their fees, I don't know, whatever.
There might have been a year, I, I remember it being on the list about three different times. The first time it may have gone through, but then after that, the conversation was around, we have to keep our fees low. If you compare some of our activity fees to the neighboring districts, sometimes we're half the price in some of our areas. So I think there's a, you know, as, as this was brought forward, there was a lot of thought to the, you know, they know our students at the high school, and they know how much of an impact this would be, and I really have to put some trust into the fact that it's our advisors who brought this forward, saying, there's some room here. There's some room here. So I think it's, it's something that, you know, allowing fees to increase to a point that it makes sense. Our, I think our high school does a really good job compared to what I experienced as a parent, in that they, they know and identify and understand the needs of our kids, and so they're not, they may, they already know the pride piece, right? So they're reaching out and they're just like, get involved. It's waived. All they have to do is speak with one person, and they make that conversation happen, and the student's in, you know? So it's like, that, that's different than what I experienced as a parent, I know. So it's, it's just a very different feel. It has been a while, I, I'm going to retract what I said about never in my time. I'd say probably not in the last six years for sure, that I can say.
Okay. That makes sense. Thank you, Leslie. Do we want to see what impact that has?
Yes. Okay. Sorry, so that's a yes here.
Take away the, do we want to take away the, increasing the class size?
No.
Board members?
Not at this time.
Not at the moment, okay.
And keep the C I S in. All right. So then we're back over here, and here's where you're at.
And add the C I S?
What's that?
I thought it was lower before. It's at one point two. Maybe it's just the evening.
It was one point four last time.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Director.
It's stuck in my head.
As much as you would have liked to, that change is one point four million.
Okay, so, okay, one point two.
Can we add the C I S back?
That was that's.
It is in.
Okay, sorry.
Yes, he's added.
Gotcha.
So then you have the E A's, that's the only one, well, we did discuss.
What, if I may ask?
Is it the E A media?
I, go ahead. I was just going to, what our objective tonight is. We could play this battleship game all night, but are we, you know, do we want to, are we, are we giving some sort of direction, or are we taking this tool and spending some time to look at it ourselves?
We're spending time with the tool to try to figure out.
I mean, it's collectively. I mean, is collectively right now as a group, or individually on our own, before the next meeting? What, what, what is the objective by the end of?
Are we finishing this up tonight?
Yes, that's what I'm asking.
Still in process.
Well, my goal was, was to try to figure out, are we good with where we landed last time? If there are changes, what changes might there be?
But this is the first time I've seen this calculated.
Okay.
I'd like some time to play with it.
Okay.
Myself. I mean, I, I, I love everybody's opinion and thoughts. And I, and already I've gotten a good feel for where a lot of people feel on this stuff. I think we're, but I, there are some things I'd like to do myself that.
Scott, you want to do?
Think about a little bit.
Oh, because that is, the thing I was gonna ask you about is, is still a no, so I think I'm okay.
Got it. Okay.
So would you like us to change all the yeses back to nos, so you can think more?
I kind of like this right now, but that's just me.
Yeah, you can leave this.
And, and, and maybe what we do is, we see this as tentatively, where we landed tonight, we'll, we'll be coming back again, have a chance to work with the tool on our own. And then see where we, where we come back together as individuals and see where we land.
That's fair.
Is, and, how to phrase this? For the community input piece, or whatever that looks like, there are some things on here that we're not currently moving forward, but I'm worried if people see them on the community input form, they're gonna say, why are you cutting middle school and high school orchestra?
Oh, they're gonna assume it's on the chopping block. So do we want to remove things?
Anything that gets published, exactly, that, these are things that are not currently being considered.
Maybe that's in the color coding.
Is in the what?
No, that's not gonna help.
No, they're gonna read it and think that it's feasible that it could be on the chopping block.
Is there an updated version that these are the things that are actively being considered? I don't know.
I could put, if there's certain things that you as a board are not considering any longer, we could strike them. But they were on the list, but they are, there's a line through.
So we could.
That would be better than color coding, I think.
Yeah. So, so maybe it's, this is currently what, what we've included in adjustments. The strike-through items are the ones that are, are not currently being discussed.
Or know that we are kind of.
They're still, they're still there, but.
Right. I think it's fair to have them on the list, but I think having it stricken through sounds very clear that those aren't currently under discussion.
Take away the color coding.
Yep.
Leave all the yeses as is, strike all the ends. Just as, just as a, as a tool for the public.
Correct.
That's what I think is important, yes. That it's as clear as possible what is and is not.
I still want to leave the color coding.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make sure of the color code, yeah.
Because I, just even for my own guidance, to understand what was attached to what. We're still technically, the stuff that's green up above is still fair game.
Sure.
We haven't necessarily.
I mean, it's a no right now. We don't know where we're at, even though to say that it's off the table doesn't necessarily mean it's off.
Right.
That, yeah, that, that, that's true.
I would anticipate your online feedback would express the concerns about anything that's on the list, period.
Correct.
Right.
And the things that currently have no are the things that people were most vocal about a year ago.
Yes.
So I'm trying to be cognizant of that, that if we, if they're on this list, even if they say no, we should anticipate getting a lot of feedback. Why are these things on the list again?
Right, correct. Yeah.
Well, you know what? I'm not sure we can avoid that.
It's.
They are on the list. Now, we can state very clearly, the things that have not been turned over to Y yet are things the board hasn't, that, that have been presented to the board as an option, but they have yet to act on, or, or, you know, to, to put into the, but I get what you're saying, Darcy, but we, it's the facts. It is the reality of being transparent.
Yeah, absolutely, but yet to turn to yes, or yet to, yet to act on, that still goes back to. Everything's on the table.
So maybe.
If everything is really on the table, we don't have any choice but to leave this whole list, if everything's really on the table.
Maybe it's an above the line and a below the line picture. Where we have everything that's above the line is everything that the board is, is actively participating.
Fairly consistent.
Fairly consistently, yep. Below the line is still out, but on the table. I don't know if that helps.
Isn't that kind of how we did it last year? Wasn't there like a tier one?
Yeah, there was, there was.
Or second cut sort of thing, or something like that.
I just think as long as there's a way to make it clear other than a Y and an N on a spreadsheet, I think that's.
So we can work on that.
I don't care what, I don't care as much as what it looks like.
Yeah, because everything is still as, as it was, everything is still in play.
Okay, everything's still in play.
Whatever we designated tonight.
And, you know, probably going back to the tiers makes the most sense because that's what people will recognize. I mean, that's how we talked about it last time.
In other years before last year, because I don't.
No.
That was a brand, that was, that was brand new, but, but.
But for us as a board, it was the thing we did.
It was an effective way of looking at it, I thought. I mean.
The only, only pushback I have on the tiers last year, we got into a little bit of a trap where we came in all or nothing. It's like a package deal at the tiers, and I was not a fan of that.
Oh, that's true.
I like this better, where we have more ways of looking at it than just tier one, tier two, or.
Yeah, I like.
We ultimately broke the tiers when we made our decisions.
Okay.
The divider.
I mean, if people can't differentiate between a yes and a no, what's putting it in a different order gonna mean?
True.
No, I mean, I'm serious. Like, if they're not gonna take the time to look at the.
Or at least, or at least put the, put the, all the yeses together and all the no's together, but they can be on the same.
Yeah.
Thing.
As long as we just have clear explanation then of, of, everything is still, everything's still on the table. This is preliminary where we, where we've made some decisions. So Dr. Battle and Lisa will work on it, and then I'll check in with you, Teresa, on where, where we land and.
And so far, there are no other options or thoughts that could be added to these, like any other.
I think what we're limited is everything that's being coded to general fund. See, we have staffing, other expenditures that are assigned to those other revenue sources. So it is a very short list.
And before we close out, I have one request on the online forum. In the same way that we had, we were able to see the themes that our community was sharing with us through the variety of different inputs, we need to see that for this as well. So I appreciate you're gonna look at every single submission. We need to get a summary of, of all of those, please.
So the summary, when it closes, I can't remember the date. You want, when it closes, because we don't want others who might be influenced if I read the twelve.
Correct.
So there will be a summary.
When it's all, when it's all concluded.
I don't know of a date at this time yet.
Might be a little bit of flex right now.
Stacy?
Just, just so principals can continue moving forward, are you looking at the increase of class sizes by one as your upper ceiling? Or do you think you would go all the way up to two?
Me neither.
I don't think we can answer that question. Honestly.
Well, Darcy? No? I'm not comfortable with anything above one. Is it, is it a hard decision we may have to make to go higher? Possibly. So it's, I don't, I think it's too early for us to tell, sorry.
I would not.
Scott?
What Darcy said.
And Eric, I know.
That's what Darcy is.
Okay. So. All right.
Any more direction on the fund balance?
I think, I think just where we landed, I think where we, where we landed tonight is, is what we're gonna look at. And we'll come back and, and have that fund balance versus challenge.
So I have a clarifying question. Did the blue and the green complicate things? Should I be changing that all back?
I thought it was helpful.
No, I, maybe just a key?
Or to explain what the, what the color coding is.
Yeah, a key to the color coding.
So the, the blue would be things that we consider already determined either through board action or necessity for management? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Great. Thank you, Lisa. And the last slide?
Yes, let me do, go back to that, sorry. Here we go.
Oh, yeah.
So we have just a couple things. I understand that we have a, our timeline is that there's a board workshop the thirty-first. Is that for budget?
That is not for budget.
Okay, so when would be our next time then, just to clarify?
That would be the April ninth.
April six.
That was sixth, right?
April sixth.
Let me look at it.
We apologize.
Yes. Final discussion on Monday, April sixth.
April sixth.
Is that in the evening?
That is at five P M.
Is there not another one before that?
There is not.
We've been adjusting with our COVID nineteen planning.
Do we feel that we would want to have, we had a hold on the thirtieth.
Right.
But I know that's kind of problematic for some staff.
Especially it's the first time back with distant learning. I don't.
Right, and that too.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why we didn't choose Monday, the thirtieth, because that's possibly a day. Well, we've got the sixth and then the ninth. Yep, yeah, the sixth and then the ninth.
Well, we're not voting that week, so if we needed another workshop after the sixth.
We have, well, we, we have a board, we have a board meeting on the ninth.
We're not approving the board on the ninth.
We're, oh, yeah, we don't approve the budget until June, right?
Yeah, right, yeah.
That's what I'm saying. So if we decide on the sixth, we need another workshop to keep the conversation going. Could schedule one.
Well, it would already be on the ninth. I would, I would put it on the agenda for the ninth anyway.
Oh, so like we'd have a workshop on the sixth and the ninth?
If we don't need the ninth, then we just cancel it.
Got it. Let's do that.
Thank you.
Okay.
One or the other, no both.
So.
I wasn't hearing both.
So the last item, I just wanted to do a quick check-in on COVID and board members. You know, this is the first time we've been able to get together to talk about this. And I wanted to give everybody a chance to ask any questions that you might have, or share any concerns, or. I mean, Teresa's given us a lot.
You're the last adults I saw since, since now, so. You guys are the last adults I have seen since.
The only adults left now.
Yes.
I know that Erin and Jamie will be working on trying to figure out the teleconfer, teleconferencing piece to make sure that we make that as easily accessible as we can.
And we'll try to do a test or something prior.
We will do a test on the thirty-first. And it will be, so it'll be a teleconference, and between now and then, I will try to play around with the technology, so.
Is it likely to be a video teleconference?
Yes. It will be, yeah, it'll be a video teleconference.
Probably leaning towards like Zoom, right, or something in that neighborhood?
Probably Zoom, could be Google Hangouts. But yeah, in terms of being, staying in keeping with the open meeting law, we want to make sure people can see and hear us.
Yeah, that is true.
So.
I mean, it'll look like.
See and hear us.
See and hear us.
Yes, for meetings, yeah, that, that's the thing, we don't need, well, they need to, so the trick is, you and I talked about this, I think we should do something, let's call it Zoom for the moment. But then that has to be simulcasted out through whatever format we're using these days. I don't even know, YouTube or whatever.
That's the piece that they're trying to figure out.
Yeah. We don't want people coming into our Zoom meeting. Because there's, I mean, that, that is no, that would not, that would be beyond what we do here normally for meetings. Because you can't get up and talk to the board during a meeting, so there's no point.
The person running the meeting, you can mute everybody, ju, just unmute the board.
We have no obligation to do that, I don't think. I think we have only an obligation to make the presentation. And I even argue whether it has to be live or not, but if those gets posted an hour after we had our meeting.
It may not, it may not be based on what I'm, what I'm hearing.
Recorded.
It would be recorded and posted like we do now.
I'm not overly concerned about coloring outside the lines of public meeting laws. I think there's gonna be a lot of left.
I imagine.
A lot of gray area that's gonna be unenforced as we go forward with these days that we're in right now. As long as we, the intent of what we're trying to do is to make, be as transparent as possible and show what is occurring.
But one of the things that we do have when we're physically together is listening sessions. What will be happening as a result of those?
So what we're gonna do is, is encourage people to email, you know, and promote that link to email the board. It's probably the simplest way to do it. I don't, I don't think, I don't think there's really an easy, straightforward way to do it without some sort of liability if we do it online. So. Emails are best.
How are the, what are you hearing about how the teachers and other school staff are feeling about preparing to do e-learning?
So it's just been amazing, the lessons, the resources they're providing, the creativity. Today, Director Mina Oftodog gave me an update with the arts and physical education teachers and all of the creative activities they have for young people. And also the professional development, you know, we offered a professional development for the distance learning remotely. Just enthusiasm across our teaching staff. Also instructional support. Many of those staff members have been helping with the childcare and distribution of meals.
And on the distribution of meals, knowing that there's a lot that we don't know and knowing that staff is already working full-tilt. You know, I looked at the map of food distribution sites, and we are really limited. They're all within the same neighborhood, pretty much, with only three of them. We've got Rambus, the one across the street from Rambus, and then Chancellor Manor. And that leaves the east side completely, completely unserved. And so I, I wanted to ask you what your vision is in terms of being more holistic in, and leveraging all those bus drivers that we have to pay for anyway.
So because the directors were immersed in actually serving the meals today, I did not have an update. We expect an update tomorrow or Monday. There are several partners that are helping with the community meal planning. Because we're on spring break next week, and if you read the governor's executive order, when we're not in session, and so it really takes all of the community and the partners. So I will provide that information to you about all of the stops. Previously, the day before we were to stop, start, Smitty and Sons worked with Giddy and Pond to actually go out to the apartments the day before and homes. And so I believe there's many more routes and many more partners, but I will get that to the board.
So your vision is that we are gonna be holistic if this is extended beyond March thirtieth? And that the east side and some of the other, like, I know there are several apartment complexes that currently are not being served, and I worry about the kids who aren't able to get out.
Yes, so we'll, we'll give you a report. It may have already been implemented. I have, I did not receive an update today.
That's your vision.
The executive order says that we are to plan to serve the children in the communities.
Since we are on spring break next week?
We expect to comply.
Are the meals not being served next week, or what's?
Oh, yeah.
I want to read the section in the executive order, because I read it twice again today. Because I was concerned too. We started this and then.
Having to stop for a week and then starting again.
That's where the, the partners probably are gonna.
The part being important.
And, and really, I mean, I have to say.
Schools, okay, for the emergency workers' childcare, schools are not required to provide this care during previously scheduled breaks reflected on a school board-approved calendar. So let me go to the meal planning. So for the meals, during the closure period, schools are expected to provide meals to their students. So we will comply with the executive order.
Right, I understand that, but we are already complying by delivering food to sites, and I'm saying that's insufficient.
Okay.
No, I, I was just curious about next week, just in general.
Because there's no.
Because we're not supposed to have school, but it says that during that timeframe, we need to provide meals. So we will still be providing meals next week.
So I will get back to you, because it says M D E will provide additional guidance to schools and school districts. So as you know, the commissioner has now implemented daily calls. So as you know, the commissioner has now implemented daily calls and it changes daily. We've been getting clarification, so I will go back to the Q and A. And if that question has not been answered, if it's not answered by our Director of Food and Nutrition, then I will pose that question during the next call in with Commissioner Ricker. So yes.
Yeah.
I know we may not be in a position to say anything yet, but given the spread of the, of COVID and everything, are we anticipating distance learning likely for the remainder of this whole school year? Are we prepared?
That question was covered in today's call, so you'll see the posted minutes. At this time, for the call today, the commissioner did not have specific answers, but all of us are thinking of it ahead.
So on that point, the, I would argue that we are well-prepared, relative speaking. We're doing an excellent job of getting, covering the ground we need to get ready for Monday, the 30th. We are gonna be offering robust programming for our students. My understanding is it will meet accreditation needs, correct? And we can count those days as, as school days by Minnesota statutes, rules, whatever you call that. I mean, I'm just curious, because there's gotta be districts that aren't gonna be there.
So this is where our legislature comes their role. And so there are several bills, and so if you look at the bills proposed, they're addressing some of those issues of the requirements in statute.
I mean, I know you don't have the answer, but I'm just thinking, there's gotta be districts that are gonna have kids that are finished, you know, they're just done with second grade, you know? They can't even get out of the year. Does that mean they're this equivalent second grader, third graders next year that ours are?
All gonna depend on how long it lasts.
How about any of the required activities such as, I'm thinking like MCA testing and all that stuff? Are we gonna be able to do any of that?
That's in one of the bills to suspend the statewide testing. So I would say take a look at the bills currently being proposed in the legislature.
Well, and I think also, Eric, to your point, we should be really proud as a district.
Yeah, that's why I'm trying to make the point. We're, as far as I know, we're even doing better than a couple right around here, so.
I mean, if it's one of those things where you look back and you're like, well, maybe all of us no days last year were a blessing because it got us in here to start doing the e-learning stuff and preparing for it.
Right. I think though, being prepared to do it for a week or two or three is very different than being, being prepared to do it for a month or two or three. So I think the jury is still out on what it's gonna look like if we're still sitting here in May and nobody's gone back to school.
Yeah, because I mean, we're hearing like, you know, we're all paying attention to the news, but, you know, the U of M postponed, not officially canceled graduation. So I'm, I'm even thinking, what is this gonna be an impact in terms of our graduating seniors this year? In terms of, of any type of ceremony, would that end up being postponed and for how long? You know, all those kind of pieces.
We have required ACT testing that's being done the first week of April. That's, you know, that, that's not likely to happen. There's, I heard from College Board today that they're considering having all the AP tests be take-home tests because they can't have all the students in one room together. So, so a lot of, so lots of ideas and thoughts and plans being made, but yeah, this is very wide-reaching.
And thankfully, we are one-to-one. That's one thing we can't forget. I mean, beyond, beyond being prepared, Scott, and you're absolutely right, we can't forget that we are one-to-one and that gives us a leg up on other districts that are only partly or not even, so.
Where are we at if the, the requirements on personal activities get tighter? As we're sitting here, the Washington Post and LA Times is reporting, the government newsroom is reporting everybody to stay inside starting tonight.
California, yeah.
All of California is basically, I don't know what that means, if it's a lockdown or, but whatever. What happens if we get to that point? I mean, are, are we feeling comfortable that our, our folks can do, continue to do, including learning and all that from home now, or do we still need to have people coming out?
So that would be speculation.
Yeah, I know.
We are planning for the distance learning and our teachers are very creative and they are thinking beyond that. I would say it would be best for us to look at the press conferences from our president as well as our governor. And I do believe there's a press conference scheduled for tomorrow for Minnesota Governor Walz. We'll, we'll know when they tell us.
Changes every 24 hours.
Changes every hour, almost.
Yeah.
Well, we appreciate everything that you're doing, Teresa, because you are, you are just working, working, working and on all kinds of teleconference calls and, you know, I look at your schedule and it's booked solid, so you're, you know, you're doing what we need, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, are we done?
I think so.
Yeah.
Great.
See you all next year.